Good evening. And welcome to the Richmond Public School Board Meeting, Monday, November 4th, 2019. Madam Clerk?
Would the Board Minister or President please respond in the store? Here, Ms. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Gibson.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cass.
Here.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Owen.
Here.
Dr. Supini.
Here.
Ms. Stane.
Here.
And we've been talking about our student this evening, Alexis Gresham.
Oh, here.
Good evening, everyone. We're excited to have Alexis Gresham, a senior at TJ, here as our student representative. And she has prepared a view opening remarks, so no further ado. Alexis Alexis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexis Gresham, and I attend Thomas Jefferson High School, a senior. Upon graduation, I plan to attend Virginia State University, majoring in Early Childhood Education. I appreciate the opportunity to be on the Student Advisory Council and being able to represent my peers. After talking with my peers, these are some things we think should be addressed. Overall appearance of buildings.
Oh, wow.
Water fountains still are not working, carpets need to be replaced, and driveways still need to be replaced also. The cafeteria food should be hot meals and not already prepared meals. My last point for this evening is that all students should have a student plan all four years of high school, starting in ninth grade, that maps out class credits, as well as any other graduation requirements, still that seniors are not going to guard their senior year. Also, as a part of Student Advisory Council, I'm looking forward to advocating for better facilities for all RPS students. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis, and thank you for your valuable input. You will appreciate it.
We have an introductory meeting.
Thank you. Gloria. Next item. The next item is a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Ms. Alexis, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every human test of all.
You may be seated.
The next item is item 1.03, adoption of the agenda. The amendments I have are to add legal to closed and under new business to discuss Navy Hill and TIAF financing and resolution. I would like to... New business doesn't happen...
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, sorry. I would like that to be during board business, the discussion regarding new business.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
No. So the question is, do we want to add it under board business? Or do we want to add it under new business? The people, you said. Ms. Gibson.
The amendment is to add Navy Hill and TIAF financing and resolution under new business. If it was under new business, it would just be announced, but it would be discussed at another board meeting. Ms. Gibson is asking that it be placed under board business to be discussed tonight. So...
So show of hands. Do we want it under new business? No, new business is no discussion.
That's right. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, I'm sorry. So let's clear this. Do we want this item added under new business? Right, show of hands.
Are we saying new business now?
New business. Right. So show of hands for new business. Show of hands for board business?
So you need a motion to amend the agenda to add legal to closed and to add a discussion of Navy Hill and TIAF financing and resolution, excuse me, under board business?
Certainly, Madam Chair.
So it's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Barlow to amend the agenda as received, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been amended as...
The next item is 1.04, approve the minutes of the July 29th, 2019 Education Council Committee meeting and the 16th, 2019 board meeting. Those minutes were sent to you in advance for your review, as well as posted to board docs. I have not received any edits. I just ask if they will be approved at this time.
Need a motion? Ms. Burke?
I move that we receive the minutes as issued.
Approved. Second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Ms. Barlow to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved as presented. Next item.
Next item is public information. I have three speakers who signed up in advance. Would it be your pleasure, Madam Chair?
Call the speakers who have signed up. And if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you have five minutes. Please come forward at this time with the names.
Mr. Frank Threets. Frank Threets. Shannon Lindblom.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Lindblom, and I am a parent of two children at Fox Elementary School. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the 465 people who signed the following petition called, "Support RPS rezoning for equitable and integrated schools." And this is what the petition says. "Schools in Richmond Public Schools are overcrowded, and the average RPS school does not reflect the diversity of our city. As we rezone to right-sized schools, we can create new school communities which prioritize integration. Integrated schools close learning gaps for disadvantaged students, while test scores for students with needs remain constant. In fact, integrated schools help all students develop empathy and an ability to work in diverse environments. These advantages cannot be measured with a test score, but they are invaluable. Rezoning takes place periodically in all school systems of a certain size. We know that some neighborhoods will inevitably be divided. Some families may have a slightly longer commute to school, or may divide their children between two schools. However, we know that our children are resilient and will adapt. We support the efforts of the Richmond Public School Board to redraw lines and/or to pair schools to reduce overcrowding and eliminate segregation. I'm also here on my own behalf. Rezoning options, one and two, change which school my children will attend, and we welcome that change. My kids are already unfazed by the idea of changing schools, because as the adults, we presented it as a normal occurrence and as an opportunity to make new friends but keep the old. I am here to tell you that it's time for Richmond to move forward towards equity and racial reconciliation. It's 2019. The time is now to retire segregation. And everyone you see with the yellow sign here agrees with me. Thank you."
Thank you. Mark Boker.
Good evening. I'd like to speak about rezoning and pairing as a holding pairing of three children who are and will be attending. I'd like for a moment to discuss what happens should the board vote for a pairing option. First of all, I would ask for accountability in the pairing process. So far, this rezoning process has suffered from ambiguity, lack of transparency, and lack of detail. For example, the administration only attempted massive outreach regarding rezoning options late in the process instead of at the outset. Budgeting information on pairing options came out in the later stages of the process as well. Information has been difficult to find on the website, even for those who are plugged into the issues. And we still have not seen any relevant maps from the rezoning committee following their last few meetings. The Bellevue Elementary School community in particular has been put through tremendous stress due to the ambiguity of proposals that the rezoning committee has created. Please do not add further stress to Richmond communities. Pairing especially would be a significant administrative and logistical undertaking. A far better job must be done on the implementation side. Second, we've all seen the preliminary implementation budget for pairing, and the numbers are concerning. Pairing will not be cheap. I would ask you to please approve a budget for pairing before approving an implementation plan. If the money is not there, how can pairing be a success? Furthermore, with estimates as high as $850,000 needed to execute just one pairing, you will need to be forthright with RPS communities when you assure them that there were not bigger challenges facing our schools, challenges that could have been addressed with the millions of dollars you may be spending on pairing instead. For example, please be sure that the pairing implementation does not take away from our ability to pay RPS bus drivers. Third, I would ask that you put in place a truly workable transportation system if you do opt to pair elementary schools. It's been said here before, the choice without transportation is not the choice at all. Likewise, pairing without effective transportation to minimize the burden of pairing on all families could be a great disservice to RPS. Fourth, if you do pair, I hope that you do so with an eye towards supporting all children.
Thirty seconds.
Much of the language of pairing advocates is focused on the supposed resiliency of children to cope with pairing. I ask that you please do the research and implement pairing plans that will focus on supporting those children who are not as resilient, especially children with special needs. Implementing pairing will be an exercise in trust between RPS and the community. And I hope that more than anything, the top priority is to actively engage all impacted families and stakeholders, bringing them to the table. And once they are there, I hope that you will listen. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have other members in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, please do so now. Sign in, state your name. Again, if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. And you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you have five minutes.
My name is Tom Parkman. I'm speaking as an individual. There is potential mischief in the proposed new RPS policies for employee online behavior. I understand proposal is to be considered tonight. I'm not sure about that, but that's my understanding. Responsible free speech must be better protected, and all grounds for paranoia are alleviated. Item one. According to the draft document, online, quote, "conduct that adversely affects students, colleagues, or associates", unquote, just to be off limits, to lines three and four. Adversely affects in whose eyes? Is just any claim of adverse effect ipso facto an existence of adverse effect? If a Republican feels adversely affected by postings from home by a Democrat, should that Democrat be subject to discipline or dismissal? What about the whole universe of people's triggers? Is just any claim triggering punishable? Replacement language, and I've got... I'll pass out my suggestions. Replacement language might be something like this. Quote, "conduct that harms students, colleagues, or associates in the judgment of the school board, subject to due process appeal." The due process appeal would be specified. In lines 19 and 20, we see the following. One must, quote, "avoid the appearance of possible attack upon the reputation or credibility of another RPS employee", unquote. This language is way, way, way too subject to mischievous misapplication. One clear case would be online criticism of a superintendent's proposal. Even if the author scrupulously avoids ad hominem attack and criticizes only the proposal...
Thirty seconds.
This can far too easily be seen as, quote, "possible attack upon reputation or credibility of that superintendent." My suggestion is not to tweak this subjective problematic language, but to scrap it. And I have a third item, which I'll pass out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Trugway, and I've been a teacher in RPS for 16 years. I wanted to speak tonight as one of the co-founders of the Support Richmond Public Schools group. We began as a group of teachers, trying to organize educators and community members in hopes of securing more money for RPS. Over the years, we've organized rallies, marches, and walk-ins. We've helped educate parents and other stakeholders about the issues of our teachers and students that they face on a daily basis. Our Facebook page has grown to a place where concerned staff, parents, and community members spread the word about things both positive and negative happening in RPS, explain complex policies to one another, share voice, and organize around the issues that are important to us. Although this page can be difficult to monitor, we see it ultimately as a net positive. It is brought to light legitimate concerns and serves as an organizing tool for RPS. We are happy to hear that some of school board members have agreed to revise the proposed social media policy language and allow more time for feedback. However, in reflecting on this process, we want to ask the district to take it a step further. Rather than just not restricting free speech, we would like this body to reflect on how to encourage it. How can we bring more transparency to decision-making? How can we solicit more staff and community input on decisions? How can we create a district that fosters and values constructive criticism and healthy debate? We are the first line of defense, the boots-on-the-ground of public education. We help bridge the connection gap by recognizing and identifying obstacles, injustices, and areas of need when it comes to our schools, students, and communities. We get involved because it is our professional and personal responsibility. Every day, teachers give their best to their students. This past year, classroom teachers, including myself, put in a lot of unpaid hours to fight for more money at the state level. We are asking you all to value our hard work, our expertise, and our commitment to making RPS succeed. In order to work as a team, you, I, and all stakeholders need to encourage open and honest communication without fear of retribution or retaliation. Fear leads to frustration, frustration creates anger, or worse yet, apathy. Since creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking requires action and not indifference, it is imperative that we listen to what is and isn't working and strive to attain a collaborative relationship with our educators. We would love to see the free speech resolution that was adopted last year become a permanent RPS policy and see the board and the administration commit time to figuring out how to bring more community feedback into decision-making.
Thirty seconds.
If we truly want to shine a light on our needs and fight for our schools, we should take a proactive stance that encourages free speech, not one that is innocent. Thank you.
Thank you. Please be reminded, if you want to show sign of support, show by waving your hands versus clapping. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Elgin Morris, and I am here with my oldest granddaughter, and I am Tossie Reed. She is one of the first 50 recipients of the VUU is RBA scholarship. She is a freshman at Franklin Military Academy. She, her mother, her great-grandmother, her sister and brother, and I are very, very appreciative of this initiative, and we would like to commend RPS as well as VUU for creating this partnership, because it gives Anaya and her 49 cohorts the opportunity for an education, higher education, and to come out ahead of the game. She and her 49 cohorts will come out debt-free. And that is such a blessing, because children are, and I say children because in one graduating, they are children to me, they're graduating in debt, and they're starting off in a hole. So they will be able to start off fresh and move forward, whether it's to start a business, go move forward to graduate school, or, but most importantly, get something that would doubt education. There is nothing, and that is the key to everything. I am very proud of her. I am very grateful to RPS as well as VUU. And over the top proud of my granddaughter, for she is setting the path for her brother and sister. And we are looking for two more Fulbright scholarships. Because that is that. Because I know that I was unable... I did not go to the college of my choice, because I was told I could not afford it. So she does not have that burden on her. We are very, very proud.
As she said, my name is Anaya Massey, I'm at Franklin Jefferson, and I'm a ninth grade. I just want to say that I actually really appreciate you, because with all this scholarship, I'm not saying that I probably wouldn't have applied for scholarships or whatnot, but it gives me a chance to start off. And it's such a good thing, because kids nowadays, they should make sure they strive to succeed and make sure they get started, because college is a lot of money, it really is. And to get a Fulbright, that's amazing. So I just want to thank you and say that I'm really grateful for this.
Thank you. I'm ready.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie Nolan, and I'm here tonight to speak about the current rezoning and pairing debate. However, I'm not here to speak on my behalf. I have many thoughts and opinions that many of you have already shared with you guys via email. Tonight, I'm here to speak for those who feel that they cannot speak publicly about the matter, the teachers. Dr. Supini, I was here a few weeks ago, and you brought up to the board specifically that you did not feel that you had heard the voice of the teachers. Especially, you believe that this is a large and integral piece of the puzzle, as do I, and one that you cannot afford to ignore. While some teachers have been brave enough to stand up here and share their opinions or in other public meetings, many feel that they do not seem to speak out, and those are the voices that I'd like to share tonight. The following are direct quotes from teachers who wanted to share their opinions publicly but who wished to remain anonymous. One teacher states, "The astoundingly small amount of funding that goes towards facilities, social workers, counselors, nurses, and custodians is a disservice to the students and families of RPS. It is just really amazing and very unfortunate that the basics and necessities are not even covered, yet millions are being proposed to go towards parent." Another says, "If RPS has millions of dollars to spend on this, then spend it instead to fix our buildings, provide adequate support for our students with special needs, bring our technology up to current standards, and provide more unencumbered planning time." Another asked a logistical question. Will teachers stay in their current grade-level positions? Or will all staff stay in their current building, many having to teach a new grade level? Or will there be an opportunity for those hired first to choose where they teach? Example, a teacher who's been here for 30 years has to pick the grade in the building, whereas a teacher hired last year has no choice and has to go where they're placed. Or will principals be making these decisions? Another teacher says, "I believe that the school board should be focusing on resources and support for schools in the South Side and the East Side. The community wants to build a better future for these children, and that happens within the community, not by sending them out. Attendance will be an even bigger issue if parents do not immigrate their children to school." Another says, "This is my 16th year working as a teacher in RPS. I have some serious misgivings about all of the options for pairing. I've watched many plans be implemented only to fall apart a year or two later. A public example of the many curriculums that RPS has ruled out only to roll another one a short term later, or how the mandated writing lesson plans have changed almost every year for the past five-plus years." Another teacher asks, "What's being done to ensure that teachers will stay in the right position in the school?" And another, "Among teachers in RPS, there are some building administrators with negative reputations due to their inflexible or bullying management tactics. This is a great concern for teachers wishing to stop working for those people or who don't want to be forced to work for them." Lastly, someone says, "Administrators should use this money to ensure that the most basic and simple solution is done. Hire top-quality teachers who can really help students with their reading and math skills. There are curriculums that each student's needs based on his or her ability. Support them with high-quality individuals for background development." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Hawes. I'm speaking on my own behalf. This is my 17th year teaching and my 17th year with RPS. Teaching is very different from when I first started, and there are many things I miss. I miss being able to teach. I used to be able to create active and engaging academic lessons to meet the needs of my students and foster their growth. Now I have to follow a strict schedule and a scripted curriculum. I miss being able to use best practices to teach my students. As any and every study will tell you, our youngest learners should learn through play. They should have time to explore all the richness of education in an integrated way. Time should be allotted to include the importance of social and emotional learning in order to develop adults capable of functioning in a global society. I miss having time to plan and meet with my team. When I first started teaching, we had a three-hour block of time while the children had all their stuffs. While it was only once a week, we were able to actually sit down uninterrupted to collaborate and plan for the coming week, month, and nine weeks of that. While we still have an allotted time in our schedule, it is used for everything except time to plan with our team. I miss having an administration that I trusted to have my back. My first administrator was Mrs. Iris Page. And if you don't know who that is, I highly recommend meeting and talking with her. She was and is a force of nature and one of the best role models I will ever have. We always knew what was expected of us, and those expectations never changed. She communicated with us and trusted us as teachers to do the very best to teach our children. While I understand the times have changed in the last 17 years, some things have not. It is still best practice for young learners to learn through active and engaging activities that they see as play. And if you truly want to keep the best teachers, you should take a close look at what you prioritize. Would you rather spend money every few years in search of the latest curriculum to enforce? Or would you rather let teachers do what they are best at? Teach you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. So I had a moment in my classroom the other day that I thought was really relevant.
Please, please, just name me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't care. To what we've been talking about with the free speech issue. And our network in Chesterfield in our district's recently implemented a new system to replace Google Classroom. It's not been super popular with students or teachers. And while I was kind of watching my kids' situations of how to get used to this program, one of them just, you know, kind of got frustrated, and she asked me, she's like, "Ms. Park, why don't they just ask us?" Like, "What works for us?" And it's such a simple thing, the idea that, you know, kids are experts on what helps them learn, teachers are experts on what helps kids learn. And so what Carrie said earlier about this idea that we really appreciate the receptiveness to changing the language around the social media policy, but also hopefully this could be a moment of reflection where we can think about, how can we create structures so that decisions get made from the classroom up instead of from the top down? And I can give it serve register credit bar. I understand that with... So I want to kind of switch to a different issue here. I am fully in favor of the idea of parents' schools. I think it's important, but I think it's something that's a long ways down the road from where we are now. I feel like what we've seen is that it's going to take a lot more planning, a lot more consulting with experts, and potentially more money to be able to do it right. But I think it's important, because Richmond's a gendered vibrant city, and when we have people move to the city and create these little alcoves of privilege where they don't engage with the community or, you know, merge with the community, it accelerates gentrification. And I'm also in favor of it because I believe that people like Tom Daryl are not born but made, and I think it's this kind of segregation that creates the kind of person that he is today. One of the other reasons that I haven't spoken about this before is because I think that there is a distrust in the community about the motive. It is really hard to believe when this district wants to rename schools after dead Confederates, but wants to endorse a plan that's going to pour money into Tom Daryl's pocket, a living Confederate who spends his free time creating films like Field of Love Shoes. And I think it's hard to believe that we're really sincere about efforts for integration when the district signs its name onto a plan that's leading a massive fiction all over Richmond. And I think we want to be trusted, and we want to be serious about what we're doing, we're going to have to be a bit more consistent.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Camus. My name is Melinda Florida, and this evening I'm speaking in my individual capacity, because the organization which I represent does not meet us for the second week of the month, so we haven't had a chance to meet yet. I'm speaking tonight on, or about rather, the social media policy and its revision. There are three paragraphs to the document, and I will make four points that speak to the document. First of all, in paragraph one, there's a phrase that says negatively or adversely impacts, and I think that that statement needs to be defined so that we can have more clarity. Also, to that same paragraph, my question is, does the intent of employee matter? And one would certainly hope so, when the punishment, as stated in the draft, says disciplinary action that includes up to, and include termination and legal action. Paragraph two, the language should be acceptable in the paragraph. In paragraph three, there's some language that concerns me. There's a sentence that reads that RPS employees are personally responsible for any online activity conducted with any technology or which can be traced back to the domain. The concern that I have is, is this referring to RPS technology or any technology that an employee might happen to use? And what do we specifically mean by domain? And my fourth and final point, in the school board policy, which is number seven dash one, or seven dash one point five, in numbers three and four, it says, "Employees shall strive to maintain personal and professional behavior that demonstrates positive role modeling for pupils, colleagues, and the education profession." And number four says, "Refrain from discourse and actions that undermine the integrity of self or other employees and compromise the professional standards of rich and public schools." I think that everyone is in favor of employees acting ethically and professionally using technology, and I think that numbers three and four of policy seven dash one point five seem to cover the spirit of the current suggested policy reforms without eliciting fear or silence from RPS educators. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Ansley Perkins. I have spoken to this board before regarding my concerns about this aggressive rezoning timeline, and how this is one of the most important decisions this board may make. I respectfully disagree with the current plan to only have two public hearings regarding the recommendations from the rezoning advisory committee. There needs to be at least one hearing in each region, and these hearings should not be scheduled within the same one and a half weeks, as we have seen in the past with other significant decisions. I have attended many community engagement meetings. My concern continues to be that the engagement sometimes feels more like quantity rather than quality. When we first embarked on this process, it was touted as a comprehensive rezoning process, and finally taking on the elephant in the room that has been avoided for years. We have almost a half a dozen schools south of the river that are between one hundred and one hundred and thirty percent capacity. Sadly, this process does little to alleviate these significant capacity issues. I just hope all the energy that has surrounded this effort will continue as we face another year of budget struggles in the city. We need to get this decision right. It may require more than one plan. It may require several months for public hearings. It may require more data and estimates. We need to get it right. Thank you.
Good evening, Grand School Board members. I'm David Jones of the Job Foundation. True that I'm proud to announce, especially with the nine young beautiful ladies on the school board, that they're now in the Quonsetty Sunfield, December fourteenth, Thomas Jefferson High School on One to Two. So that's a day that I didn't know that was your school. We love you, dear father, and dear neighbor, like the streets of all the young ladies in the city, which provides a cheerleader bodyguard of our RPS, and more and more to be a part of that and speaking. We would love for each and every school board, men included, to be a part of it, especially our ladies. It's not often you get that, any young ladies together in one room to express your feelings, and they can talk to you as well. We need launch on, they're going to receive gifts. This is a great opportunity for our young ladies in the city. And I carry myself as a king, and I believe every king is a queen, so we get it for our young men. So I believe our queens need to be lifted up as well. Lastly, I feel like I got my finger on the course of the city. I stay in the city, I live in the city, I'm working in the city, I spend a lot of time with our young men and women. So we have the young men, and they all want to have the city championship, and God put it in a way that it works out that it will be basically be South Side versus the West End, which will be U and I High School versus Thomas Jefferson High School. With all the rezoning going on and all the integration thing talks, I think it would be a great opportunity to bring the whole RPS together as one, not just for fun, but also as a black tie fair dinner, and to worship in our house of God. So, like I said, I never expected this to be easy, but y'all should know by now I'm not going for it. I have courage to do it, and I'm not scared of anything. So you might as well just announce today and let us just move forward, because I'm not going, I'm going to keep pushing until it happens, because this is something that God put in my heart that I believe will change the city, especially with the changes that you've made and the changes that are to come with the new school and everything. This will be a great opportunity for our city to come together as one, and fellowship as one, and grow as one. So again, like I said, we have, we're waiting on your okay and your attorneys to give me the last details I need to give on my strength to get it done. Everything else is done, then we place time, all of it's done. So, like I said, it could be the first of the year, it could be end of December this, but the football season ends December fourteenth, anything after that we'll do. So if we can work that date out, I think that would be a great opportunity for the city and for the school board and for all of you. Again, thank you. December fourteenth, one up.
Hi, my name is Jed Dutton. My wife Krista and I have a son at Mary Monford and a three-year-old daughter, and I'm here to talk about parenting for a moment, and in particular, the Integrate RPS petition that was read earlier, because I think that petition sounds really good. It sounds like a world that I would want to live in, and I'm not surprised that it has one hundred and sixty-five signatures, maybe partly because there's not a date on it. But still, it sounds great, and I can see why it does have those signatures. And, you know, with this topic on the agenda, my wife and I, we went down to Carver yesterday for a cleanup event, and we met Mrs. Giles, who is awesome, and one day, I could totally see us feeling great about her being entrusted with our children's education, because she is fantastic. But I think, when you think about the vision that's expressed in that petition, you've also got to think about, does this live up to reality? And does this really, is this the world that we want to live in, or is it the world that we actually live in today? And I would just encourage you all to consider a few questions. Is the other resources needed to execute this plan well, is that the best use of those resources for all the students in the city? Or would they maybe be better used to other places in the city, the South Side, East Side, wherever? Does this idea represent the will of the people?
If there were systems and structures in place which allowed teachers to share their concerns without feeling the need to express them in what for many of us is a new-fangled way of getting concerns out there, I think it would be fair to say that if teachers feel bullied, ignored, that they're treated with hostility, and that they experience punitive repercussions for expressing very legitimate concerns about safety, climate, and culture. So that's what I wanted to share with you this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Laura Turner. I'm the niece of Admiral Samuel L. Gravely, who has a street named after him in Richmond's Fulton, and he also has a ship named after him, and a school in Haverhill, Virginia. He was born in Richmond, Virginia, attended Richmond Public Schools, and he graduated from Armstrong High School. I want to submit his name to be the new middle school that's going to be on Hall Street Road in Richmond, and I would have someone else here with me to talk about his military career, because he was the Navy's first Black, first African-American Admiral. Mr. Chambers is here with me.
Good evening. My name is James Champles. I'm a twenty-year military, Army retiree, Master Sergeant type, and someone has recently defined me that luck was a combination of chance and opportunity. And I want to redefine that. I think chance and opportunity presents opportunity for destiny, and I think this school board with its leaders can lead this city of Richmond into the era of repair by recognizing Vice Admiral Samuel L. Gravely on either one of the Lunigill schools or the renamed schools as a person that our youth should emulate. He's native-born, he's indigenous of the birthplace of Richmond in historic Fulton. And by the way, I'm speaking on behalf of Innovate Fulton, and personally on my behalf and her behalf, so do we get all that time allotted to us for this speaker?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Not as an insult to anyone's intelligence here, because this is the school board, and you are educational leaders, but I would like to take a few moments of my time, and just, if you're not aware of who this great man was, again, he's a native-born Rich girl. A native pioneer, Vice Admiral Samuel Gravely, was the first African-American to be commissioned as an officer in the United States Navy, the first to command a Navy ship, the first to command a fleet, and the first to become an admiral. Gravely was selected for the rank of, excuse me, rank in nineteen seventy-one. Eventually, he retired from active duty in nineteen eighty as a vice admiral, after rising to the command of one hundred warships, sixty thousand sailors and marines while based at Pearl Harbor. Unastonishing feat, to say the least. Throughout his career, Vice Admiral Samuel Gravely served as a role model for thousands of Black naval officers who came after him, compelling him, given the fact that he had no such role model himself and any memoirs. It was written that Gravely describes his life, war, and his secondment in Richmond, throughout the enlistment service in World War II, as a sufferer of real chaser. He also matriculated at Virginia Union University. So currently, the city has recognized this man, and this is no disrespect to the city of Richmond, a pothole avenue in historic Fulton, which I had a petition to get his signage re-erected because it was lying on the ground. Now, we have opportunity here, the school board, to take the lead in recognizing this man by naming one of the new schools to be built after him, showing the city of Richmond that we can also cross the bridge of diversity, as far as if his statue cannot be placed on Monument Avenue along with the other military leaders, there's something is wrong. We have recognized Ash and Athlete, we have recognized African-American baker, female baker, Magda Walker, we have recognized Bill Bull James. What is wrong with recognizing this person, this pioneer, this trailblazer? I see fault to be found with any governmental agencies, school board, senior regiments, or whoever, especially homegrown, and that's not taken into consideration. He's not elevated to the statue that he deserved. Good segue, statue. We could put a bust up on the river with the development with the riverfront, right where he was homegrown in Rockets Landing. We could put a statue of a bust in the historic Fulton Memorial Park, which we're about to break ground on in April, amongst other things. So, a closing note, last but not least, thank you for your attention, and I would like to present as a calling card, given the tide of having business cards anymore, a calling card to keep this at the top of your mind to the president of board. The saying described here is, "When you stand and fight for America, you're defending an America that is not perfect, but is better than any other country I know." Signed, Vice Admiral Samuel L. Gravely, June. And he also served on the board of Tragador, and we have a place earmarking this saying in the Virginia War Memorial, as soon as you enter, you look up, you're right at the gift shop. So this is for the board to share, by the board president. And a personal thank you to Ms. Burke for supporting us in the first annual Innovate Fulton Fest. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Seeing that we have no others in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, this will conclude our home of information period. And before we move forward... And before we move forward, we would like to introduce to some something that this board has been committed to, reinstating our turn and auditor to provide the board's oversight, as well as helping the district to create better efficiencies within the school district. So at this time, I'd like to present Mr. Milton Parker, our turn and auditor for Richmond Public Schools. So glad to have you here. Thank you. Next item.
The next item, and four dreams for RPS, four point zero one, saving dreams for RPS I think, on five forty-two, scale and supported stamp.
Good evening, school board. I'm not sure that this is working, so feel free to follow along on the attached document. I'm here this evening to do a walkthrough of the priority two project plans that we did share with you two weeks ago. So tonight, it's an opportunity for me to walk quickly through those projects, specifically focusing in on the actions between October and December, for this current time period. Obviously, this is work that's done through our talent office, so I'm serving as a proxy this evening. And the primary owners will be the three directors in the talent office. They're just not here this morning. So, we'll start with action two point one, which is around top talent. There are seven projects within this action, and the first has to do with ensuring a maintained focus on customer service for the talent office. We just held our second customer service training last week, which included all members of the talent office, as well as folks who are front-office staff, which is in priority four. And then, in December, we'll also be looking to baseline perceptions of customer service of staff or applicant. The second project was incorporated into priority five, modern systems and infrastructure, and that's just to improve the applicant experience for enhancements to our online portal. Projects three and four are connected and have to do with increased investment in marketing and recruitment, including maintaining one of the recruiter positions from last year. Beginning here this month through the end of this year, we're completing procurement of design services for a recruitment campaign and related collateral for us to launch at this year beginning of next. Project five is something that you saw two weeks ago as a proposed repurposing. We proposed to repurpose the idea of a call center to instead provide stronger customer service to our staff by ensuring more streamlined processes related to teacher licensure, which is one of the ways that many of our staff require support. And so, suggest using those dollars for additional capacity towards that work. Project six is also wrapped now into action five point one for efficiency, and that's streamlining away from paper-based processes to a real HRIS system, which we'll discuss in five point one, but those dollars were put there so there weren't duplicative processes. Project seven is to expand the functionality of our online application to allow applicants to submit video of their teaching as we continue to seek high-quality candidates compared to RPS. Obviously, seeing their work in the classroom is an important piece, and we'll use the next couple of months to complete procurement of that from our current application vendor, Talent Ed, for a longer-term pilot for preparation in twenty twenty-one recruitment. We also have added a staff member to begin thinking about increased rigor selection process. We move to action two point two, which is an effort explicitly focused on increasing and retaining the number of male teachers in color. We have three projects. The first that will launch this month is to convene a working group of RPS male educators of color to begin thinking through what this cohort experience could look like, to include PD, different growth experiences, mentorship, social events, et cetera. And then, in alignment with the marketing improvement efforts I spoke of in action two point one, we will complete the procurement of design services with an explicit focus on men of color as well. Action two point three, we're pleased the share of course has been fully completed. Project one was the implementation of the teacher salary step, which was implemented at the beginning of this contract year. Teachers received a one point one seven percent step in addition to their raise. And project two was our ongoing work for salary decompression, and with the board's approval last year, the two roles that were completed in preparation for this contract year were principals and nurses. So those have both been completed. Action two point four, which is related to professional development, has four projects and four efficiencies. You will see them have moved into a couple of different places. Project one, three, and four were all things that Tracy spoke of two weeks ago as we think about professional development, not only for our teachers, but also for principals as related to new, to-be-adopted ELA and math curricula. So you'll see for project one, this training was captured and partially funded in actions in priority one. And so, we had proposed that three hundred thousand dollars from project one be repurposed for the equity fund, where you gave shared preliminary information about the last meeting, and we will share additional information on this evening. You'll also see those repurposed funds from project three and project four in the same way. We have hosted and are hiring for the additional staff members to support our ELA and/or math work. Action two point five, related to equity and inclusion. We have two projects here. First is to identify a partner to work with us for this training as we look to identify and confront implicit bias. And then, the second piece will be to identify pilot schools in the new year in order to train those equity leads for a broader scale up over the course of the year. Action two point six, which is university partnerships. This is the expansion of our teacher residency work, and so that over the course of this contract here is implemented, and that funding helps fund coaches to support our residents. The second part of this partnership's work is to create specific reimbursement guidelines for current RPS teachers who seek out endorsement in high-need areas such as math, science, ESL, and exceptional education. And so that guidance will be created over the next two months for launch in the new year. Two point seven, our celebration to honor educators. Over the last couple of months, we've been working to finalize a date and location. The date will be May seventh at the Science Museum as an opportunity to celebrate our excellent principals, teachers, support staff, and as you recall, the continuation of the Rodney Robinson European Education Award. We're working right now with our working group to develop selection processes for some of these new awards, for example, Principal of the Year or Support Staff Member of the Year. And then finally, RBA incentives. The project is explicitly in this first year to provide tuition reimbursements, which is included then in action two point six. So lots of exciting things happening in priority two. Happy to take any questions at this time.
Is this on?
My only question is about the licensure person. Do we not have a dedicated licensure person?
Oh, we do, yes, just to add capacity.
So we're going to add a part-time, because I like it.
That's correct, yes.
Because that's, that's really important.
Yes, all those issues from the past have been corrected. This is just to help either improve the customer service for our teachers around licensure.
All right. Ms. Carlson?
Thank you, ma'am, too. And so I do have a question just to piggyback off of my colleague's about HR. So we're hiring an additional part-time licensure person?
It would be an hourly employee is the idea to add additional capacity to help streamline and make things go faster at this point, stop full-time.
And we're also hiring another talent acquisition? Is that what it's on?
Yes, the project plan as related to selection had always included an additional staff member to support increased rigor in the selection process moving forward, so that would go hand-in-hand with the video piece. That is a full-time position. This was a repurposing of the call center dollars for the part-time hourly rate position.
All right, so a position and a half, essentially, okay.
For licensure, yes. Oh, you mean across the, across the priority.
All right, and in action two point six, a lineup university partnerships.
Yes.
So the focus still on the Richmond teacher residency contract or program. This year, we talked about the, well, we talked about equity inclusion and programs specifically to get additional men of color in our classrooms. And I would think that with two point six two is much to focus on the Richmond teacher residency, that's a partnership with the C U with.
Right, and we have U U, B S U, and other institutions that have education programs that I, I hope that we can rework this to include special partnerships with them as well.
Perhaps, Lita, I mean, we can look at, we look forward in the plan.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. So I, I just have, there are a lot of kind of more detailed questions that I have that I can send, follow up with. The main points I wanted to make is to reiterate the request that on any time we have a budget document that we are going to be adding a full-time staff position that we noted as a, as a, you know, in terms of a number of FTE, so, you know, part-time could be three-quarter time, three-quarter time, be half-time. So just moving forward, if we could be sure to quantify that for...
For this case, it would just be using the allocated amount against the hourly rate. So we would go over that case.
So, and then, the other question that I have is, or note is, is a request to note the actual spend for these items where we're at right now. So on the item regarding salary decompression, for instance, if I recall, we had allocated half a million dollars for salary decompression for principals. And so, I wasn't sure if we also needed a full five hundred thousand also for nurses. And so I'm wondering what the actual estimate is for that fine item. I think that would be helpful to see, you know, whenever I see whole, you know, whole numbers, I know that those numbers don't reflect the, you know. So I do think it would be important to see what the actuals are that are coming in, and I'm curious on that one, since it is a part-time item.
Those two, I know from the estimates, the reason we add the nurses in is by putting those two together. We were basically at the one million, but we certainly can provide breakdown of those two based on what staff are on time.
Ms. Burke? Thank you, ma'am, the chair. Just a question overall, because I know the procedure changed, hiring teachers. So the process now is HR department sends teachers to be interviewed, straight to the schools or do the principals contact them to be interviewed? What's, do you know what that process is right now?
So ideally, what's happening is, and there was some transition, as you know, in the talent office over the last couple of months, that, that folks are applying, our recruiters are doing initial screening and recommending top candidates for principals to interview in some key positions, for example, the reading specialist position. We also have members of the central office team who are experts in that area, so for example, some of our literacy specialists on the academic team are also doing some pre-vetting of the reading specialist candidates so that principals' time is not, is maximized.
So the principals, ma'am, the principals don't contact those persons to be interviewed? They're sent from that, from HR to the, to the schools to be interviewed by the principal? That's what my question is.
Yes, yes. Oh, yes, and yes, that is ideally the process. There may be some instances where maybe there is not a significant candidate pool, and the principal might look in Talent Ed themselves, see ten or fifteen candidates, quickly skim, and then say, "I'd like to reach out to these folks, too."
Ms. Dor?
This might have been the document here at the last board meeting, but I would love just us, as we go through this, just to kind of fix a spreadsheet of original budgets, revised budgets, actual, you know, whatever it is, whatever the plan is, just something really simple, because it's, it's good information, but it's hard to track all the pieces going up and down, up and down between the pages.
Sure, so just two things. One, our initial intent with this was more of a content project plan, so we can definitely layer in budget pieces. I think once we get to the equity fund decision by the board tonight, then we can also do exactly that, create a column that shows, okay, what the initial allocation was last December, which was shared with the board.
Ms. Carlson?
In addition to that, I, I would also like to see, as we look at our organizational chart, just the add-ons and something that's, whether it's color-coded or not, I don't know, but, you know, we cut significantly from central office, and it seems as if we're adding back a significant amount. So I'd like to see where those with this, with this plan, where those new positions are.
To be clear, across all priorities, there are no new full-time positions. This one hourly rate position will be the only one that you can see across the five. Every two weeks, the org chart is updated. The positions that are reflected in the project plans are the ones that the board received this summer and were what were approved in the budget. There are no changes to that.
But what I'd like to see then is the org chart, something that's color-coded, so I can see what is, what is new for, for the, for the train for RPS. Even if we send it again, just so I can see, okay, these are new positions, these are new positions, these are new positions.
So board members, just to make it clear, so you would ask for updated org chart for the board to review?
Yes. The updated org charts are currently on the RPS website. We can certainly cross-reference that with the board, with the budget that the board approved last June, but there are no changes to that.
All right. Thank you. And our student representative, Ms. Alexis, has departed. Are there any words that you would like to, any more words, advice you would like to leave with us tonight before you leave?
No, I would like to say thank you for that opportunity to appreciate you.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good night everyone.
And Ma, I think Ma, down here.
Oh, yeah, she's down.
Thank you, Ma. Hopefully she's here. Next item.
The next item is item five, your board actions, five point zero one, receive for action, proposed revisions to policy.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to state for the record that I am incredibly grateful for all the feedback we have received, in particular about the Internet East policy. Just as a matter of clarification, this is boilerplate that was identified to address a hole in our policy. a hole in our policy. No intent whatsoever to curtail the free speech rights of our educators, which we I welcome. All of the feedback, constructive and otherwise, it's why I try very hard to spend time with schools, why I have a teacher council, a principal council, a student council, a parent council, and many others. And so I am, from the administration's perspective, welcoming the proposed modifications from various school board members. I just want to reiterate our commitment to making sure that our teachers and all employees' voices are heard clearly and loudly, and we'll continue to do everything we possibly can to ensure that that's the case. I know we still have some places where it's not, and we are working on that. And I encourage folks who are watching or listening to reach out to me where you feel you are not able to speak up and share what is not working. My cell phone is 804-658-8415. Feel free to call or text anytime if you have a question or concern. And my email, as you all know, is jcameras@rpschools.net. Thank you.
Ms. Levin?
So with that, certainly, as was mentioned, we've received feedback tonight, feedback this morning, and I believe some was sent over the weekend but received this morning from board members. So there's a lot of, I guess, there are a lot of questions and clarifications that need to be made. And so I proposed via email that policy 7-3.11 and 8-3.2 be removed from the, for consideration for approval for tonight so that we can synthesize all the feedback and work with the administration to bring forth a new draft in both of those areas. But that the remainder of the policies that are presented tonight for second read that did not receive any feedback, that was 1-6.2, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, 7-3.20, Workplace Bullying, and 7-7.7, Employee Absences and Lead, moved forward tonight. There are no objections that can be considered. I think those changes per the summary were not substantive changes, but it just still required a board approval. So that's my recommendation.
So board members, are we amenable to removing 7.3 and 8.3 because feedback was due to the administration November 28th? I'm sorry, October, October 28th. So in consideration of, excuse me, the deadline, are we in agreement to remember with those?
Further ado, there's no objection from the administration to delaying that specific policy. Those two policies. Anything else on this? Thank you.
So are we amenable to removing those two policies? Okay.
So Madam Chair, we would need a motion to approve 1-6.2, 7-3.20, and 7-7.1.
I need a motion?
Do I have to write it down? Then I move the approval of those policy changes.
It's removed by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve minimum of policy changes. Any discussion? Call the question?
The motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Burke to approve policy changes to policy 1-6.2, policy 7-3.20, and policy 7-7.7. Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yep.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item is 5.02, received for action, the expansion of the P-card program.
All right, so last spring, we launched a P-card pilot in RPS. Just as a reminder, a P-card is a purchase card, pretty much as a company charge card that can be used for someone's and others' purchase of services. We currently have 12 P-cards in use. We have six in schools, three in our talent office, one in our facilities department, one in community engagement, and one in culture, climate, and service services. A good story here has been with our talent office, which has used P-cards a lot to go to different recruitment events across the country. I don't know if you're aware of this, but RPS currently uses paper checks whenever folks go out on travel. It's a whole when hotels don't take paper checks. So it's been very helpful in those sort of bridge and act for our goals. The next two slides go into some of our P-card activity. I think that the highlight here is that while we think that P-card is an operational game-changer, we haven't gotten the sort of traction that we want to see. As of last week, there were 250 transactions for a total of $39,000. If you do the math, 1.8%, 1.08% rebate check on that would be about $700. So while it's better than nothing, we could be doing much better there. As we shared at the last, at our first discussion, RPS is a little doctor in the state with P-cards, but again, we really do think there's huge revenue here and opportunity in RPS, particularly in the processing and the procurement team. One of my goals is to get our team to switch from processing some small 100, $100 permits and to really move toward going these really high-dollar RPS and contracts where the cost savings could be. So we have a couple of recommendations. One is to issue additional cards to teams responsible for paying some of our larger kind of expenses, things like utilities, fuel, provide services. Second is to expand the P-card into 18 additional schools. We just did not get a lot of great data since the fall. We'd like to start to push these cards out more to get better data and to get ultimately a larger rebate check.
Ms. Owen?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration for the P-card expansion.
Second?
It's removed by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Young to approve the P-card pilot expansion. Any discussion? Mr. Young and Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And kudos to the administration during the particular, just reminded by how we got here, specifically the Council of Great City Schools audit identified among their voluminous recommendations for how we can improve this school district. This one opportunity indeed to save, if I recall correctly, more than a million dollars a year. So compliments to my colleagues and to the administration. Thank you.
Ms. Cosby? And Ms. Baller, go.
Thank you. It's just, it's not even with a P-card, but it's a P-card and everything else that we have on its agenda for an action per our norms and our practices that we set on as a board. Things for action, I thought we were going to do our second meeting, our second school meeting of the month, so I just have questions about why we're pushing these to action rates today.
So Ms. Cosby, you are correct, but as we all know, there are extenuating circumstances that we have to take action on before the second meeting of the month.
What's the extenuating circumstances in this, I mean, in this, just tell me, is it there, Tom? Tell me.
So if you notice on the chart, they're doing, she has the highest spend and the highest rebate check in the state. We've actually managed to hire away their P-card administrator, maybe who for us being one, that person started last month. Right now, she's managing 12 cards. So we really want to start to expand for a little bit more again to make sure we maximize that position, but also make sure that we get the biggest rebate possible for RPS.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just doing my maximize, I'm just talking about process, that's all, that process that we agreed on.
Still, no, yeah. Ms. Baller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. I'm interested to see more about what types of regulations we have in place for use of P-cards, so I was wondering if you may be able to follow up with whatever policy or implementation stuff we have as an information item for us.
I have to send that around, we also have that raised level of protection of the human rights, so it's kind of protecting against our new technology.
Yeah, that's a good question. So is that in our policy or is that a administrative regulation or?
We're going to build, bring up policy force of the board once we're ready to go live with the full card programs and the pilot case.
So what do you think would be able to go live?
So, Mr. Simmons, I guess, so you'll be, as the administration will be bringing recommendations as far as best practices, and we look at our other local agencies that have, have a much high capacity or use of their P-cards, and they're rebate, so just, I guess, comparing what policies they have in place, make sure that we are operating as efficiently as possible, making sure that those internal controls are in place. Thank you. Call the question?
Motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Young to approve the P-card pilot expansion. Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Dorr?
Yep.
And Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0. The next item is 5.03, received for action, personnel actions.
Good evening. The recommended talent office actions for the school board meeting include the nomination of 21 employees, the change of contract of 13 employees, the resignation of six employees, the furlough of 14 employees, the return of leave of seven employees, the retirement of one employee, the termination of one employee, the name change of two employees, and unfortunately, the death of one employee.
We need a motion? We don't have a question?
I move that we approve the personnel talent office's recommendations.
Second? It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve HR action on the talent office. Any discussion? Call the question?
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yep.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0. The next item is board business, 6.01, received legislative update.
Good evening, Chair Page, Vice Chair Dorr, Superintendent Camaras. Tonight, we have a revised legislative agenda for your consideration to help guide our state legislative efforts for the 2020 session of the Virginia General Assembly. This revision has been prepared based on feedback from the board and the Ad-Hoc Legislative Committee chaired by Ms. Gibson. We would like to thank the Legislative Committee for their ongoing collaboration with the administration over the last month. The input has been extremely helpful as we prioritize our latest legislative issues. With an approved agenda, we will be able to proceed with engaging our legislative delegation in the coming weeks following tomorrow's General Assembly election. Legislators have an early December legislative drafting deadline, so it is imperative that we're able to discuss an approved agenda with them and identify champions for these crucial funding and policy priorities. The agenda is also accompanied by a policy position document to help RPS monitor all legislation considered by the General Assembly. I'm going to have Matthew go into more detail about both how the document was prepared as well as respond to legislation during the upcoming session. And then I do want to flag that in the upcoming month, we have seen in our family academy that we have all types of advocacy efforts, where we will be presenting toolkits that will help families engage and allocate in our efforts. We also have an amazing Student Advisory Council who is up working to advocate for issues they believe will help our communities. At this time, I'll turn it over to Matthew.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Good evening, Superintendent Camaras, Chair Page, members of the school board. We are here tonight to ask for your adoption of a legislative agenda so that we can move forward with taking this to our state legislative delegation and asking them to help champion these issues as we go into the session. Getting to this point, the Legislative Committee has been very helpful, meeting several times in the past month. We were able to bring in several subject matter experts both to the committee as well as in conversations that I had with them myself. Both the Commonwealth Institute, Virginia Education Association, Legal Aid Justice Center, all provided input on this. And we feel that we've got a really strong legislative agenda for you now. We have, it is a little bit smaller than what was initially presented to you. I think that that will yield us results in terms of being able to coalesce our advocacy efforts on slightly fewer issues and issues that the public will really be able to understand and advocate for side by side with us. Now, once the governor does introduce his proposed budget in December, that is when we will start providing a few legislative reports, and at that point, we will then also be able to work with our legislative delegation towards crafting further budget amendments. I will just make a few comments about what we're expecting with the governor's budget. There has been some news in the past few weeks about additional costs that the state is going to incur. There are some technical adjustments in terms of re-benchmarking that are going to cost about another $300 million a year. That's a stress that's being put on the state budget. And I do know that the governor has been asking state agencies to look at different cost savings, other programs that they can cut. So it does sound like the governor is struggling to put together a budget to really accomplish all the goals that the Board of Education especially has recently recommended. And I do, I have heard that early childhood education is going to be at the top of the list, but we will see what other, what other policies are included in that budget. Going to move through the document somewhat quickly now, I do think it's important that we spend just a little bit of time on each one of these slides and take any further feedback or suggestions on each one of them. Priority one is, and we are, we do still have this legislative agenda framed in terms of dreams for RPS aligned with those different priorities. We do feel that that is a good way to help everybody understand what these issues are better. And priority one, excited of rigorous teaching and learning, we are talking about equity-based funding. This is a proposal that came through the Board of Education. They recommend, they are recommending that the state merge the existing adverse add-on program as well as some other prevention, intervention, and remediation funds into a single fund and with a different funding formula that would actually prioritize funds for divisions like Richmond. So whether this fund is created in and of itself or it's also created and money, further money's added to it, Richmond stands to gain either way. So that's a really critical budget item that we will be advocating for very strongly. Also in this list, as I mentioned, early childhood programs. We did initially talk about expanding this to three-year-olds, but there really is a desire for us to make sure that we are providing further access and flexibility for programs to serve both three- and four-year-olds. And as I said, the First Lady has been champion for early childhood programs this year, and we do expect that that's a centerpiece in the budget this year. Any comments about priority one? On priority two, that skill and supported staff, teacher and staff compensation, this, we need to continue to increase our teacher compensation in the Commonwealth to at least bring ourselves up to the national average. We are very much aligned with the language that we have here with other organizations like the Virginia Education Association, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia Association of Counties, Virginia for Cities. Also note, the VEA told me... Also note, the VEA told me that they have put in a budget request to the governor for $2.5 billion. That's because a lot of that would fund teacher salaries among many of the other needs that we have. Priority three is safety and loving school cultures. Support staff is a key issue that we are hearing a lot about from other localities across the state. That is about a $400 million a year budget request that would go to the General Assembly. And then the Board of Education has also recommended some additional items that we've included here just regarding how our different support staff positions are categorized to try to prioritize a few of them for additional funding rather than just the entire bucket of those. And then also with student discipline, this is an issue that we feel it's one of the only policy issues on here instead of funding issues. We do feel it's really important. The Legal Aid Justice Center just came out with a new report looking at the number of cases of disorderly conduct charged against students in the last four years. And they found that we are at 45% in the number of those cases, 360 in 2016 to 523 in 2019. And of those students, black students, which represent 22% of that population, are getting targeted in 62% of those cases. There are folks that feel like this is limiting school divisions by getting rid of that charge, but there are other laws that are less subjectively enforced. And so we do plan to be supporting W. Born and Senator McCallum as they continue to advocate on this issue during session. Priority four is deep partnerships with families and communities. And in this area, we have included resources for English learners. This is also based on one of the Board of Education's recommendations. And then priority five, modern systems and infrastructure. This goes into several different areas regarding school modernization and construction. We do just need general support from the state for this. We ask that they stop using lottery funds to pay for general fund applications and that they continue to focus those lottery funds back towards the localities and school divisions for school construction. We have also had great suggestions regarding a school construction commission. This is something that has not really been suggested before, but Councilmember Addison, we met with him and discussed this. And it would provide a commission at the statewide level that would really provide the leadership to help identify additional funding mechanisms, establish some best practices, and hopefully create savings for school divisions across the state by creating standardized designs and procurement processes. And then, of course, we also want to make sure that we continue to talk about the local composite index and that formula and how it doesn't recognize the unique needs of Richmond based on all the taxes and property that we have in the city. So that's an issue that we will continue to focus on. We also do have the policy position document. I'm not going to walk through this line by line, but we did form this document based on the 2017 version that you all approved and then also based on what you've added to that during this past session. And then there's a few other things within that that we have enumerated on. I will just note the one final thing that we did discuss with the legislative committee was just that in the absence of any adopted positions in this document, that we would look to the Virginia School Boards Association and Virginia Association of School Superintendents for their positions. And if there ever is a conflict, we would come back to the school board to affirm a position on that topic. So this is a document that we will use with the legislative committee during session as we are reviewing legislation on any new items that come up. We may be coming back to you with requests for further position statements. Ms. Gibson, did you want to add anything to the presentation?
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, this is great. I'm thankful that we are here. There are a couple of things that, one thing that I did want to highlight, which was an item that I had requested adding to the position document. And that was specific to transparency. The language that I proposed was that we had, on that document, we used the language that says, "RPS supports policies to enhance transparency in the governance process overall. This includes revisions to existing FOIA laws to improve information access and engagement of family and community members in the governance of our schools as well as policies to ensure public input and visibility in using private funding streams for public programs." And so my hope is that that language can be added to the documents that we adopt. But yes, that is the main stream.
And so, before you continue, you have a question. So Ms. Gibson, is that a recommendation coming from the committee to change the proposed language that you were suggesting?
So there are many changes that the committee discussed and that were made. And I believe that there was consensus on, I'm not sure why that particular one was not included.
My apologies, I did not hear consensus on that issue from the committee. I heard concerns about including that, and so I did not leave it into the final version.
So just to be clear, when the committee has a recommendation, they need to bring it forward to the board so the board can support or not support those recommendations coming from the committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thanks for the clarification. Mr. Stanley, thank you for all the work that you put into this. I know that you've done a great job of getting a lot of feedback, bringing in all stakeholders working with us. And we can be a little more challenging than some other bodies to deal with, I'm sure. I do think that we probably could have been a little bit more clear about whether we had consensus on how to do it. I felt comfortable with that language. I don't know if I, did you have objections to that kind of language, Mr. Young?
I don't have objections to a lot, but I'll defer to the majority of the committee.
So perhaps we could have been clearer as a committee, but I do think that that would stand as a recommendation from the committee based on the two of three. But certainly interested here, there are any objections to it.
So, Ms. Gibson, is there a report from the committee, the recommendation, for the board to consider with this information, the presentation?
So the feedback that I provided both to the committee, I blind copied all of my board colleagues. And so that particular item was shared with the board at large. I'm not sure what other report that you may be looking for in this instance.
Recommendation from the committee to the board?
Well, I think the recommendation from the committee to the board is the document that we reviewed this evening with the addition of one item that was admitted from the presentation.
So the board has had ample opportunity to provide feedback regarding this proposed suggestion?
The one we haven't seen in writing. You said...
Yes, I can, I shared that, I sent that to the board. Ms. Owen, you were copied on that on October 22nd. And the language reads, "RPS supports policies to enhance transparency in the governance process overall. This includes revisions to existing FOIA laws to improve information access and engagement of family and community members in the governance of our schools as well as policies to ensure public input and visibility in using private funding streams for public programs."
So question to the board, are we in support of that and would we proceed with that language? If board members? Consensus? So we're in agreement, are going forward? So when committees have, you know, if there is a recommendation, it needs to come formally to the board as a recommendation so the board can support that idea? Mr. Young?
I'm sorry, just have a point of clarification. We are voting this up or down this evening, is that correct?
To adopt the legislative agenda with...
Right.
We will be voting?
Yes, with the suggested language that the committee has recommended. So we create a motion? We are to adopt the legislative agenda as amended tonight. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the legislative agenda be adopted with the amendment, amended statement, revised statement.
It's been moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Mr. Ballow to approve the legislative agenda as amended with the proposed language tonight. Any discussion? Mr. Young?
I want to vote no, not because I don't respect the terrific work done by my colleagues, but because the document has entirely way too many policy statements that object to, too many to recite herein. It's probably no surprise to anyone here, but I'll just identify one for the purpose of brevity, specifically charter schools. I want more charter schools, I want a lot more charter schools, not figure out. So I'll be voting no regards to this document, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Okay, I have a question because we have two things here. We have the legislative agenda, and then we have the policy statements. And the change is to the policy statement, is that correct? The policy positions. Okay, not to the agenda. Can we vote on them separately?
For the board? But we have the motion on the floor to...
To do the agenda, but then the change is to the positions. So...
So we have voted on the motion as on the floor, voted up or down, and then you can amend that motion.
Yeah, when you say legislative agenda, we're reading it as a package, which is the PowerPoint, which is like the priorities as well as the policy factors. That is, as a committee, how we've been approaching it.
So the policy positions are part of the legislative agenda? Okay.
Is that correct, Ms. Gibson?
That was my understanding, but if we need to amend the motion to say, you know, the motion to amend, you know, to, I don't know if Ms. Burke would be open to providing the motion to say that we adopt the legislative agenda and positions as amended, just for clarity's sake?
That's what she said? Okay. So, Ms. Owen? I have a question.
So we're going to vote for the whole thing, both things at once?
Yes, so the motion. Ms. Burke, can you repeat your motion?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the report regarding the legislative agenda inclusive of the amended change.
So it's moved by Ms. Burke and seconded by Mr. Ballow?
And for clarity, the motion was made, as you said, by Ms. Burke, seconded by Ms. Ballow to adopt the legislative agenda as amended tonight.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Ballow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I heard a comment from one of my colleagues. I just felt I had to respond to it, because I'm a little bit confused by it. As much as I appreciate how open he was with his stance with regard to charter schools, the policy position we put in places related to the local authority. And certainly, I expected based on the quality and the quantity of feedback that we received from you over the years that you wouldn't want a top-down approach, mandating any type of school. That you would almost surely want some sort of approach that came as locally and organically as possible. So I'm sure to see her about that.
Mr. Young?
That's precisely my point. Yes, in Virginia, we all know we have very few charter schools. And it's because school boards have a say in keeping charter schools out. Specifically, charters are only permissible if the school board allows it. It's kind of like the rooster guarding the hen house in the land. So that's the impetus for my objection to the policy statement.
Dare I say, a democratically elected rooster?
All the questions.
The motion was made by Ms. Burke, seconded by Mr. Ballow to adopt the legislative agenda as amended tonight. Mr. Ballow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby abstaining. Mrs. Burke, yes. Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes six two. The next item is...
Before we move to the next item, I just want to also note that the session starts January 27th.
The second Wednesday of January, I don't have it figured out.
Okay. Yes. Yes, we're ready for the next item, and voting is tomorrow.
Six point oh two, received reports from board members attending committee meetings and conferences.
This door has sent her committee report on the finance committee, and we uploaded to the board. Next item?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Richard?
Ms. Young?
Just real briefly, Felicia, I'm tempted to, and this fullest pledge for purposes that don't have us in front of them, includes two committees, the legal ad hoc committee and the vacant facilities committee. But Felicia, largely the impetus for the form or pertains to what you requested at the last meeting. So will the chair of the board just want to inquire if there are any questions about that?
Thank you, thank you for the work. Next item?
Next item is six point zero three, discussed Navy Hill and TIF, I'm missing a resolution.
Ms. Gibson?
Hello, thank you, Madam Chair. So there are two things that I wanted to discuss. The motivation for adding the agenda item this evening was my learning that we were, that there were meetings being scheduled in our schools to promote the Navy Hill project. And given that we have not taken a position on the project as a board, this gives me ease, so I wanted to discuss that. And then also wanted to introduce a resolution as it pertains to financing, which is the financing model that is the proposed for the Navy Hill development. And so I'll read that to you. My thought is that we would introduce it this evening and then we could vote in an upcoming meeting. So the resolution reads, "Whereas tax increment financing funds divert tax revenue above a determined current base level from a locality's general fund to finance development project costs. Whereas the value of the base level would be eroded each year by inflation, thereby causing Richmond Public Schools to lose money from the city of Richmond during the tenure of the TIF, which can span several decades. Whereas new development projects funded by a TIF could artificially inflate the perceived well-being of the city as calculated by the local composite index, thus reducing the revenue Richmond Public Schools receive from the Commonwealth of Virginia." revenue Richmond Public Schools receive from the Commonwealth of Virginia. Whereas, Richmond Public Schools and other school districts across the Commonwealth remain impacted by budget cuts to education made during the 2008 recession. Whereas, the school board adopted a facilities plan which requires an estimated $800 million to modernize existing school facilities and has increasing operational budget needs to support the district's adopted strategic plan. Whereas, the state of California has outlawed TIF districts and the state of Georgia requires cities of clean voter approval to create a TIF district. And the Maryland General Assembly had to pass a special bill to appropriate $300 million to Baltimore Public Schools to offset lost revenue due to TIF funds and special tax deals. Therefore, we had resolved that Richmond Public Schools seeks the authority to opt out of contributing its share of revenue to TIF district funds or other tax deals that fund city development projects. So this was shared with my board colleagues prior to the meeting. And so the motion that I would like to, for this evening, is a motion to prohibit use of Richmond Public School buildings for the promotion of the Coliseum slash Navy Hill redevelopment project.
I'll second that.
We need your motion.
Yeah.
So any discussion? Ms. Dorr, Ms. Young.
Just a question for the administration, if you could explain the process as to why they're using RPS buildings, et cetera?
My understanding is, the request was for a town hall, or I think two town halls, where, again, I don't know the details, but to hear from members of the public. And I believe the mayor was going to use as an opportunity to answer questions from the public, I don't know more than that. And that's my understanding. And we've been asked in the past for facilities from the city for various purposes like that. And so it did not occur to me that that would be an issue. Certainly, the board feels otherwise. We could make an adjustment. But again, my understanding is it's not a presentation, it was a town hall, a public town hall, to hear feedback from the public.
Ms. Owen.
I have a question about, I tried to look it up in our policies and bylaws, but don't we have some policy or bylaw about the use of public buildings, use of school buildings?
You do have a policy on that. It is community relations section, I believe, four dash four point one. And can you read that, Ms. Owen? Okay. Well, it's a fairly lengthy, well, basically, I'll read it. For the purposes of the policies, school facilities are defined as buildings, grounds, and equipment owned or operated by the school board. The primary purpose of these facilities is for the support of instructional programs. However, the school board encourages the use of these facilities by the public when such use will not interfere with the basic purposes of the educational programs. The school board and the administration are taking exclusive authority to terminate uses that become disruptive. Chargers of these for the use of the school facilities are not designed to limit or prohibit use, but to protect citizens from expenditures of public money appropriated for classroom instruction or other purposes. It goes on, and I'll paraphrase here, talk about the heat, the expenses, what they go towards. It talks, then it talks about the administration, excuse me, the superintendent is authorized to permit the use of the school property as described in this policy and on an emergency basis. And then that's when you get your report each month of the actions taken under the policy. Talks about eligible organizations. The school board permits use of facilities by non-school organizations to the extent permitted by and consistent with applicable law. The requirements of the regular school program shall receive first consideration in the use of school facilities. And school facilities may be made available to community organizations whenever there is no conflict with the regular school program. If the school board permits the use of its facilities by members of the community or the distribution of literature on school property or at school functions, it will permit such use for distribution by the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts of the United States of America and other youth groups. And permission for, permission of course will not be given for profit-making activities. All organizations are responsible for payment of custodial fees. And there is a permitted waiver by, Richmond Public Schools' facility rental fees will be waived for local and state government agencies. It may be waived or reduced for charitable or other educational organizations as recommended by the school principal, et cetera. Ms. Owen.
So this is, who has asked to use the school buildings? Is it the mayor or the different council people?
My understanding is the mayor's office asked to hold a town hall. I believe it's in the evening, is that correct?
Yes, one in the evening at Harbor and one in the evening at Hill. It is a town hall, as you said.
Okay. Yes, just recommending, I mean, just for consideration, I think that board members need to be mindful, if organizations go through whatever the facility rentals process, and hopefully they did that in this instance, that you do not take a position that will be selective or discriminating against an organization or another for whatever the position or not. I don't think that you want to be in a position of picking and choosing what organizations can or cannot use the facilities. Certainly, there is some leeway here for, you don't want people to have profit-making activities, and so that's excluded from use. But board members just need to be mindful that in action to prescribe who uses for what, when, if not a school board activity, may be, may not be the best, may not be a wise decision to make. If the organization has nonetheless done everything else that it's supposed to do as part of the facilities process. Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my, my, I do want to emphasize that I see that this is political activity, and we also have policy that speaks to political activity in a school building. I think that in the, I appreciate the terminology, this being called a town hall. However, the town halls throughout the city have not, have largely been promotional events that have not provided, in many instances, many, you know, a lot of time allocated for the community questions, and certainly has not provided a balance in terms of the perspective that is presented at those meetings, which is why it gives me pause that they have been held and are supposed to be held in school buildings.
Any more discussion? So my question is, so you are asking, Ms. Gibson, you are asking the board to approve this resolution tonight?
The administration is agnostic about this. I do want to note that every month we hold the Democratic Party and MLK.
This Thursday.
We do that every month. So, that seems a little there.
So the motion, let's restate the motion. The motion is to prohibit the use of Richmond Public School buildings for the promotion of the Coliseum Navy Hill redevelopment project. Call the question. Ms. Ballo?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
The motion is made by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Mr. Young to prohibit the use of Richmond Public School buildings for the promotion of the Coliseum Navy Hill redevelopment project. That's not the resolution that she read, she wants the resolution approved at another meeting. This is something different. Ms. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Sapin? Ms. Cosby?
Abstaining.
Mrs. Burgess? Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Dorr?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Motion fails. Three-four.
Ms. Dorr.
Ah, can I ask a question about the resolution itself that we'll put on in the next meeting?
Yes.
Can you explain the last paragraph? Richmond Public Schools seeks the authority to opt out of contributing a share of revenue to TIF district funds or other tax deals that fund city development projects. Could you, are you saying, I think I understand, what are you saying, that for the inflation, we would, like, how would you calculate that last paragraph? Or what is the objective of the last paragraph?
Right. And so essentially, what I would want to do is what I believe has been done in other states, which is to hold schools harmless, essentially from deals such as this. And so the way that the deal would have to be calculated would be such that whatever the portion of revenue that is currently allocated towards schools would continue to be allocated towards schools. So unfortunately, other city services would, you know, would endure the burden of this type of deal if it were approved, but schools would be held harmless.
So I have a question, Ms. Gibson. So can you provide the board the links to the sites where you have this, received this information or found this information from other states?
Sure.
To give us, to give us some background information regarding this resolution?
Yes, we had a public speaker who came and spoke and provided us with a presentation, that's where I pulled up that documentation, and I will be happy to forward that again to the board.
So you'll be able to forward that information by?
Yes, I can do that, certainly in the next day or so.
Okay. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is item seven, administration business, receive a JCT update.
Good evening, everyone. So walls and rooms are going up very quickly, all these new buildings. And as that happens, staff, principals, teachers, everybody's starting to notice that we have a move coming up. So there's been a lot of interest in me about getting organized around that. Over the last couple of weeks, going into this week, I've had meetings, one-on-ones with the principals to talk about their needs, what a move might be. I may start with some really good issues. Elkar Thompson in particular has some great ideas about how to make a 1,500 middle school student more manageable as it opens next year. Also want to note that this month, we're going to reengage in the school community with our R and M, which are our experts to bring in, answer questions, to get teachers more comfortable with the move, and to start the process of creating a customized move plan for each school. And then finally, in the spring, we are planning a hard hat tour of each of the sites with the teachers and the staffs. Again, just to help them activate the new building and to see what our classrooms are going to be, and to answer any questions there. The goal, of course, is to get those out of the building as soon as possible this summer, so that we can have a certain routine come in behind them and start to take all the things that we want to take out. There are some boilers, some water fountains, other materials that we want to get out, and to prep the buildings for demolition. Moving down to foreign costs, this is the same site that was presented last week, there hasn't been any movement here. And now turning to the new project update for Torres Mason. The project is almost about two weeks ahead of schedule. There's been a lot of progress on brick installation over the past couple of weeks. If you go there now, you can see walls starting to take form, the project team is really taking up the pace in that area. I would also note here that RPS is on the agenda for the November 26 CAR meeting, so this is in time for Thanksgiving. Hopefully, we'll see a lot of people there to help us to get our case with CAR. Moving down to green, the construction firm is bringing in a second crane to help steel installation on this site in an effort to get ahead of schedule. Day by day, it's hit, the weather's changing, so we're trying to buy as much time as possible before we start to lose time. I would also note here that the second floor concrete's been poured on the project and that they are aggressively putting in steel. So they're in a good place, they are on schedule, we're trying to optimize a little additional time here. Now moving to the middle school on hold, the A and B sections are about a week behind schedule. If you recall from the last update, these are the admin areas, the large cafeteria, the auditorium. So you have the larger areas that don't require many finishes. Once these areas are under roofed, the ride-in, the works should go faster and will make up that week. Areas C, D, and E, which are the classroom areas, are still well ahead of schedule, the roof joists are up. I believe that the roof deck was actually completed last week, so that should be an update there, in our current shape here. And as all the projects, the glass windows are monitoring tracks, there is a shortage of concern about the project, but if it's not in time to schedule, I just want to... Any questions?
Ms. Ballo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May Mr. Simmons, can you provide an update on where exactly we are with CAR? So what exactly are they considering on the 26th versus?
CAR issued a letter saying that we needed to explore other feasible alternatives to the disposition of the building. One was taking the building and moving it someplace else. Another was stomach it to someone else to rehab, to rehabilitate, to use for another purpose. Another was for us to rehab. They issued a response, and I gave them the budget with these projects, that those aren't feasible alternatives. Taking the building and moving it someplace else is a considerable cost there. If we were to sell it someplace else to rehab, we'd lose the land, that land for playgrounds and other areas. So wasn't feasible in that regard.
So to follow up, if I may, Madam Chair, so does, have we proposed alternatives that we've heard about, using bricks? Is that part of our approach here?
Yes, we proposed, we proposed taking bricks from the 1922 section and using those bricks and the columns and the fencing around the building. Thank you.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Dan. I, sorry. I just want to remind everyone that over a year ago, Kenya and I, we voted for RPS to build these facilities. We were told that RPS didn't have the capacity, the bandwidth, and the city should do it, et cetera. except. Months later, four of us conveyed our concerns rather vocally about the cost, and we were told we didn't know what we were talking about. Some time later, we had an opportunity to have conversations about value engineering and reducing costs. And then even my salsa neighbor and I, we introduced a motion to reduce the lead certifications. And every step along the way, we've been told that we didn't know what we were talking about, we were wrong. Trust the JCT, trust the city. And now it's been demonstrated, I think, over and over again, that that trust was misplaced and misguided. And because of it, our children and our teachers are being short-changed. And they're being short-changed, if you listen to the County of Chesterfield and friends there, along with some arguably third-party objective persons in industry. They're being short-changed in entire school. I had some conversations with my colleagues about what to do next. I'm most pleased. I was told to keep my powder dry on that for a subsequent meeting, but I look forward to the city of Richmond never doing again what they have done now. And I want to add, I think it's really important, particularly in line with the preceding conversation, that it struck me as particularly warm that anyone in the city would think that it's okay to even contemplate a conversation to spend $620 million or something north of that for new Coliseum. And again, just trust the same persons, the same parties that were responsible for these three schools. Thank you.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I wanted to, I appreciate the comments that Mr. Young made, and, you know, it goes without saying that I feel incredible disappointment for the fact that we are here talking about the school costs that are enormously high. I'm just thankful to see the reporting in the Richmond Times Dispatch, which highlighted the points that I have tried to emphasize throughout the process. And so, you know, the three takeaways that I want to emphasize, that I implore that we consider moving forward is that, that schools should build schools. I think that this makes sense both financially, but also just simply programmatically. There is no other entity that can appreciate the programmatic needs that we have and will, and will need for buildings, and certainly through operation. I think that it would behoove us to use a more competitive bidding process moving forward. And I want to reiterate that I think that we need in-house expertise to manage the projects, which I think would make sense again, especially from a fiscal standpoint. You know, I, I think that, you know, it's surprising to me that there's still also so many unknowns. We're talking about opening a school, you know, in, in September for these schools, and we still don't have demolition costs, we still don't have, you know, a final number ultimately for these projects. So, you know, I, I think that ultimately, this, this process has, has failed, and I am just incredibly disappointed because we're talking about a failure that, that is $10 million of dollars, that, that has resulted in the, you know, it's essentially cost us another school building. You know, the city did make it very clear that our schools should come first, and I, I think that the city should be very angry. And I, you know, I, I worry that there were decisions made in order to impact an election, to ensure that these schools were built before the election. And again, I, I don't see how that serves the, the best interests of our students. You know, unfortunately, I don't, I don't know what we can do at this point, except to look to ahead and, and hope that we are able to build additional schools in the future and, and make better use of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons? Can you speak to some of the nuances, whether, I guess, differences in the cost, you know, construction costs, different localities? Because when I last looked on Chesterfield's site, we weren't able to find capacity over the building. Are we talking, is the building the same size? Because, you know what, I'm too, and disappointed. And yes, we need to be good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, but it's disappointing that we have this discussion, because this is impacting our children.
Right.
And do they not deserve the best? So, can you speak to those items?
Yes. There's a lot to unpack there. I think I would first start, as you just did, Ms. Page, with commenting on the tradition of the current Elkar Thompson, the current George Mason, and the current Green. I don't think anybody can visit those buildings, walk around, say that those are acceptable buildings for kids, or that we can wait an additional year to build the buildings for those kids. And the staff, that's, that's, that's the first thing. The second is, I would push on Mr. Young's assertion that the group that was being interviewed is an objective third party. This is an organization that represents small to midsize, small to mid-sized firms that do this work. Mr. Venka is a lobbyist that represents their interests. I think he can look at this whole article very critically and just understand what's being, what's being put out here. So, these folks, they look by, they were pre-qualified, they were not selected. One of them was not selected because they didn't get the application in on time. So, when we talk about making sure that we're getting the lowest cost, and that that should be the only factor in writing these contracts, when there's a vendor that can't get an application on time, get a proposal in on time, that's a red flag. In terms of the costs, we're cherry picking data, we keep going to the VDO, the VDOE data. The Chesterfield schools that I referenced were bid out two years ago. We've talked time and time again in these discussions about how much construction costs have grown over the last two years. If you look on the VDOE page today, where the school is built, being built in 1920, the average cost per square foot for elementary schools is $305. That's where we're at. George Mason is a little bit higher because of all the site concerns. We've talked about that. They don't have a middle school being built right now, but if you look at the same VDOE data from 1920, there is a high school that is smaller, that is being built at less of a square foot cost of working right now. We just keep cherry picking this data to make our points, but we're not looking at the full picture.
Dr. Sapien?
So, essentially, what you and the administration are saying, that this information is false?
I'm not saying that it's false, I'm saying that this information was constructed in a way that supports Mr. Venka's and Mr. Dieter's assertions. I'm saying that various other data needs to be considered. Like, for example, I think the article said that the total cost for the schools was $75 million in Chesterfield, not accounting for the fact that our schools are bigger. So, looking at, and looking at square footage is a much better indicator of costs. I think that also in the VDOE data, it not included the contingencies and the allowances that are in our number, but not during apples to apples.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I, I want to reiterate that I'm not cherry picking information. I have a master's degree in architecture from Yale University. I am familiar with the construction process. I reviewed the estimates that the architect themselves provided in terms of the square footage cost, and the numbers that have come in do not align. So, I, I, the, 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 the numbers are very clear, but unfortunately, it's water under the bridge now. And so, I think it would behoove us to acknowledge that there have been some missteps. And the fact is, we don't even have the approval to demolish a building that we've already decided used to be demolished. I think that what we need to make sure moving forward is that we are having those conversations that will impact the pricing in the public eye. And so, as we are looking at the, the cost and the approach for the facilities, the facilities plan pricing, I think that is a place that, that we can do that, so that moving forward, we do have a fair document that will provide us with, with true costs as we move forward, and, and then let's make sure that we can be then accountable to actually meeting those costs.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons, for providing us that information to clear up the misleading article that's in the paper, what, Sunday's paper? But thank you for that clarity. Next item?
The next item is 7.02, Receive Up, I'm sorry, Review Update Facilities Conditions Assessment Spoke of Work.
All right, so we've uploaded, I'm sorry, we've uploaded two documents here. The first is the RFP for the update to, to the 2002 facilities master plan that was released in 2007. The second document is the FCA proposal that's discussed last week with some edits. The first was to add the list of schools at the bottom of the page, and also to add very clear language that this would be used to update the 2002 master facilities plan. I still really believe that the school club that was discussed last week does a really good job in taking account of all the recent work that we're doing, all of our tenure forecasts, and that having people in our buildings is, actually doing the work is a good thing. It will cost more money, but ultimately, I, I do believe that there are gaps in our facilities. I think one example of this is the John B. Carey, which was called in the last, the last review. So, I came here in the spring to say that there's a huge issue with John B. Carey's roof. I'm assuming he tore the building, tore the building, solved some of the issues there, had it replaced. This was not caught in that last assessment, primarily because I don't think folks went to the building. I pulled the assessment from, that was done back in 2007. Each school essentially is a two-page. Not a lot of information. I don't know what to do with this. This never made it into school due, again, for John B. Carey, the roof crisis, listed, a myriad of other problems listed, what the school law listed. There's a lot of holes in this assessment. I'm just concerned that if we continue to do the same thing, we'll have the same, the same results. But again, we do need to get this out, have a look to the direction of the board, how to best, best do that.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to be sincere as I can with conveyment, correct your appreciation from all your awesome work, Darren. I am going to, however, vote no, presuming that someone later makes a motion and comes before a vote candidly, because I would much rather spend those dollars on actually fixing our buildings rather than studying the buildings. Thank you.
Mr. Borla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Simmons, do you have a ballpark idea of what you think this study would cost?
Seven to 10 cents per square foot. That's the, that's kind of where it went.
Yeah. The total?
Right. Yeah, I mean, $450, $500, which is ballpark.
Oh, $315. The company's performance in the last one was...
Ah.
Oh, it's amazing.
Right. So, we made some adjustments. We have four and a half square feet of schools in RPS. We did remove some of the, the new buildings, of course, the green, those were on whole George Mason. We took out the altar building, we removed even the, the, the last round of the roof, so that you cannot come up to the site. Kenya had to try to get those, those walls down. But ultimately...
I'm sorry, I'll give you...
Ms. Dawson?
Just think removed, yet the price is higher this meeting than it was the last meeting. I'm confident, but it was like $315, $315, which I thought was...
I guess $315 last time. I said it was 10%, sorry, 7 to 10 cents per square foot. We had four and a half square foot.
Okay.
Square feet.
So, Borla, we need a, a motion?
I need an motion, this is not probably a motion.
Technically, if I may...
This is spoken word?
Technically, it does not require a motion. That being said, the board indicated that it wanted to review this before it was put out for bid, and so, we wanted to be sure that before we did so, we have the board's consent. That could be done informally, but I didn't want to go through the work of having the team process an RFP if it were not designed to meet the board's objectives. So, I would be grateful for some indication by majority of the board that this is ready to be put forth on the street.
Mr. Borla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just a point of clarification here, I assume, my assumption is that if these costs come in high, that we would be in a position where we feel like we could walk away, against where there's no commitment for us to actually enter into a contract until, until we see what the, what the proposals look like and have the opportunity to negotiate. So, so I guess the fundamental question here is whether we want a study done? Of course, I understand the administration would want to...
I actually don't think that is the question. I think the question is, is the board okay with this description of work for which we would get bids? And then ultimately, given that it is a contract which will likely exceed $250,000, it will come back to the board regardless. So, really, this is just for us to find out what it may cost for various firms to do this work. Again, we just didn't want to put it out and then have the board say that what was put out was not reflective of the board's desires. So, there is definitely additional opportunities for the board to stop this train. This is just step one. And again, I don't think it needs a formal vote, just some indication of consensus would be helpful.
Ms. Young? Ms. Gibson, Ms. Door?
Within the last, I think, within the last, I think, 12 months, I've had several conversations as Darren does, most of you know, persons in the industry relevant to something that's kind of comparable, energy bodies. And the advice some of the counsel that I was provided was that it makes more sense, makes a lot more sense in that circumstance, at least, and I think it's, I think it's pertinent to this, too, to instead identify those opportunities where you think you have an opportunity to secure a significant ROI. And we all acknowledge, we all, the point is, we all acknowledge, we know many of the problems in our facilities, we know many of the problems relevant to our infrastructure. So, I personally don't understand the sense in then paying someone to tell us many of the things we already know, but to Darren's point, there are things we don't know. To, to address Superintendent's question, I would prefer that we instead, we narrow the scope of this to achieve what I just spoke to. In other words, those unknown quanti, those unknown quantities. We know what buildings we still need reached on, we know what largely carries on. We largely know what buildings that we need new boilers, and we largely...
We largely know what buildings that we need new boilers, and we largely know what buildings we need new windows and et cetera. Doesn't seem to make any sense to me to pay some consultant to study what we are, what we're working at. And four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars, I will make the point, can buy us some roofs, some boilers, uh, some HVACs, and, uh, and it, and I also think that there are some additional buildings that can be taken, taken off this, uh, this list. So that would be my request, my colleagues, that, uh, that we significantly narrow the scope of this, or those RFP.
No, I just wanted to say that I completely hear you and agree with what you're saying. My concern is that we get the, the priority list and just what we're buying, that we get that right, in the right way, we get the right sequence of boilers that are being replaced. And I'm just not sure that we have that, we'll be there right now.
Mr. Gibson, Ms. Dore?
So I just wanted to provide a bit of a timeline. So there was a, a large master plan that was done in two thousand and two. I'm not sure what the cost of that was, perhaps, uh, Mr. Simmons, you may know. That plan has been updated in two thousand and seven at a cost of seventy thousand dollars. I believe the plan was then updated again in twenty fifteen. I'm not certain what the final number for that was. And there was, that was also probably inclusive of a overall kind of community facilities plan engagement. We were told in the fall of last year that the city wanted to go through the process of updating the cost of facilities plan, um, and we were told that the cost would be shared, and there was an expectation or a estimate that it would cost fifty thousand dollars. Then the administration came back to the board and told us the cost for this project was now looking to come in around, um, a hundred thousand dollars. Then the project, then we, the board approved that. Then the, um, project disappeared. And I inquired on it a couple of times, and in the December fourth meeting, I was told that the administration, uh, saw that the costs were coming in even higher, they were anticipating to be more expensive, upwards of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if I recall, um, and that's why the project hadn't proceeded at that time. Now, um, I continue to inquire about the status of the project, um, over the, since December, to, um, to move forward, especially after, you know, the, the cost came in so high for the construction of the current schools. And so, um, uh, now, we were given this scope document, um, and, uh, and were told in our last meeting that the cost was coming in around three, would likely be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In reviewing this document, it's clear to me that, um, it's been developed in such a way to inflate the costs, uh, likely to align with the inflated costs that we're building for these school buildings. There is no reason why we would need to go and walk a building that, when the board has already agreed that the building should be replaced. There's no reason to, uh, walk a building when we have a clear understanding, um, that the, the facility has, uh, significant needs. And so, ultimately, what I know from my constituents is that the city is tired of plan after plan after plan. And, um, it would behoove us not to, uh, initiate a plan that costs as much, um, as, as a new roof. And so, we should look at the information that we have. There has been a lot of work that's been done, and let's find a way that we can find the cost of our facilities plan as it was adopted on December fourth, twenty seventeen, and get accurate numbers so that as we move ahead and, uh, hopefully build more schools at a more reasonable cost, um, we have, uh, true and accurate numbers to refer to. Superintendent?
We are going down this path at the direction of the board. If the board does not want this, that would be helpful to know. We certainly have many things to occupy our time, and I know Mr. Simmons in particular has a rather broad portfolio, which keeps him extraordinarily busy, which is one of the reasons it has taken us some time to prepare this document. My recollection is that this board felt very strongly about this, uh, which is why they directed us, I believe by vote, um, to put together this scope of work and ultimately put out an RFP. If that is no longer the desire of the board, that would be extremely helpful to know at this point. I want to caution the board on two things. One, we don't really know what this will cost because we have not yet put out an RFP, and our, um, changing numbers are merely a reflection of things we hear amidst the construction community. They are not based in any concrete proposal because we have never put out an RFP. If the board would like us to proceed, we can put out an RFP, get some real numbers, and the board, um, it's well within its authority to decide whether to proceed or not. To proceed with part of the study, all of it, or none of it. If we do not proceed, uh, we will largely take what we have and just apply some, um, estimated escalators, uh, for inflation and what we have seen. It will not be well researched because there's not capacity we have on staff, uh, but we will do our best to come up with what the cost of building a new school in the year twenty thirty will be to flush out the facilities plan. We will also, though, uh, not have a full review and a prioritized approach to our current maintenance needs, which, yes, we can all walk into our buildings and identify what some of the cosmetic issues are, and perhaps even some of the mechanical issues. But right now, we are largely, um, running from crisis to crisis as may appear. We can continue to work in that fashion, uh, but we will not have any, um, overarching plan that will guide which boiler, which roof, uh, which wall, which floor, in which sequence, um, other than whichever is in most crisis at that moment. Let me also say, I'm loathe to spend any money on a plan as opposed to action. Absolutely. I just want, um, us to consider the trade-offs of not engaging with professionals on this to inform the road going forward. And again, just to return to my first point, um, we are only taking, uh, this step at the urging of the board, and if the board feels strongly otherwise, it would be helpful to know that tonight.
Ms. Dore, Ms. Ong, Ms. Marlowe, and Ms. Young?
I personally, uh, would support a scaled back, um, identify some ways to scale back this proposal so that we could keep in mind, um, the, the potential cost. It's also made me think some of the items in here, like walking through the buildings, et cetera, prioritizing maintenance projects, might be better suited towards an FTE. So if that's something that you feel like your team might need for next year, I would be in support of, um, having someone on staff that helps us continually analyze some of these projects. So I, I would be in support of empowering you to tell us what you need. But I, if a proposal came, I'm happy to admit, but I go to procurement, if a proposal came back for five hundred thousand dollars, it would be hard to swallow.
Ms. Ong?
Well, as I see it, right in the first paragraph, it says, "This data will be used to update the facilities master plan." Those of us who've been involved with this rezoning committee know, we have already identified new schools that are needed on South Side. They're not in that plan. If we are trying to update facilities plan without the data that we need to do that, then we're going to have another mask on our hands. I have no problem with doing some scaling back, but somebody who knows what we're doing, who can go in and say, "This, this, this, maybe we thought this building was in worse shape two years ago, now we found out this building is in worse shape, and so maybe it needs to move up in the priority list of repair and renewal." But, we're going to have to make new decisions that do not appear in that two-year-old plan. Because in that two-year-old plan, we're not talking about building new elementary schools on South Side. And I think we need two new elementary schools on South Side. Badly, we need two new elementary schools on South Side. And before you know it, we're going to need a new middle school. So, let's take a step back. Would you want to take a couple of schools off of here? That's fine, I don't know which ones. Mr. Young seems to have some in mind, but at some point, we have to have good data, just like the teachers have to have good data, and the principals have to have good data. When we make these incredibly complicated and difficult decisions about our facilities, we need good data, and we do not have it now. So, however we're going to get it, maybe five hundred thousand dollars, which we do not know if it would cost that much, maybe we can have an RFP that we put out that's reduced in scope, but maybe we put it out and it comes back at five hundred thousand dollars, then we say, "Okay, wait a minute, what can we take off to reduce the cost?" I mean, that's one of the things we do with RFPs. If it comes back more than you want, you go, "Woo, no, we're not doing all that." So, I got no problem with fiddling with it some, but we need to do this because we need the data. Thank you.
Mr. Marlowe, Ms. DeYoung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so in light of, in light of the fact that, um, I don't think we have to commit to spend at this point, I, I would also be, uh, interested in seeing what type of responses we would get to an RFP. Uh, I don't know, when we talk about scaling it back, if there's some approach that we could structure it so we could say, "Here's, you know, we, we want to see two different scopes, or we want to see one full scope and one parrot dial scope, or we want to have an idea of what else you can add, you know, add or subtract, um, to make it more of an à la carte type selection, I don't know." I, I, I certainly have a hard time with figuring like five hundred thousand dollars. I have a hard time thinking, "Well, let's spend five hundred thousand dollars, not receive enough funds to put into substantial improvement in our schools or construction of schools," and then find ourselves with a four or five-year-old updated plan that we need to refresh again. So, I, I would also be interested to know if there, if there is some approach like a, a FTE or something along those lines that we could use to help address these things. But, um, the question, which I guess I haven't been building to, but I do have a question, is, uh, how we, I'd like more detail about how we actually prioritize some of our facilities' maintenance expenditures at this point. Does it, does it typically come down to what is in crisis mode and then sort of build out from there? I know that we sort of talked about it before, but I'd love to get your little bit more insight into how we prioritize this up now.
It really is a place in crisis mode right now. So, we're going to have wide range of, for this, for our next tier of crisis mode of projects, double review. It's about twenty million dollars to say you have created funds, we're about nineteen points for that. We bring you back, uh, a summer, fall, and winter break schedule for those projects at the next, the summer second, or the end of this. But to answer your question, it would be about losing crisis, and we'll be right away.
So, to follow up on that, so you, so you think this plan will help? Is it a lot, I mean, my impression is it's a lap of resources that's put us in this situation where we have to address things in a, you know, crisis.
Yes, a lot of the maintenance. I also really don't want us to, to treat the work we're going through as only projected and, uh, enrollment separate from this, not that to be a part of this, but, you know, if we want to get all this room on the South Side, we need additional schools. Or it might be a good idea to, you know, expand upon and, you know, do some renovation on the South Side schools. I do know that it's going to be a part of this discussion as well, for that scope of work.
Thank you. Yeah, in the interest of moving things forward, uh, I think what I'm hearing is, while there's a lot of mixed opinion, there's, it seems there's some consensus to at least, um, put something out so we can actually see what it would cost, but to structure, uh, the RFP in such a way that we would be able to scale back incrementally if we felt the overall cost was prohibitive, where we could say we want part A and B, but not part C. Unless I hear any strenuous objection, um, with that general guidance, uh, I would like to move forward to at least, uh, turn this scope of work into an RFP and see where we are. I want to reiterate that absolutely no action would be taken without board approval, so will be an opportunity to weigh in and, and make some decisions. But I think that meets the needs of most of our...
Ms. DeYoung, Ms. Gibson?
Three quick points. Uh, one superintendent a moment ago, uh, said it really well, when he used to refer trade-offs, because this conversation reminds me of a conversation I have almost every day with a student, and they'll inquire, "Should I get a double major, or should I minor? Is it valuable?" And I look at them and I ask them a question, "Hmm, that's, that's the wrong question to ask. Of course, it's valuable, but what is the opportunity cost? What is that trade-off?" So, I think I beat that dead horse enough. The second point is, yes, I do have some schools in mind, uh, but in regards to the schools to take off the list, to scale it back. And the third point is, at, at the risk of really belaboring a point, uh, to connect a few dots, just a year ago, literally just a year ago, we're provided numbers that these three new schools would cost one hundred and ten nine dollars, and they're now one hundred and forty-six. So, to be warned for us to commission a study today and have any expectation that the numbers would have any semblance of reality a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, has been clearly disproven by the fiasco relevant to spending millions, tens of millions of dollars more than what we were told just a year ago. By the experts, I should advise, by the experts.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the only points that I want to make in terms of the RFP itself, I, I don't think it's necessary to, um, reinvent the wheel. There was an RFP that was created, um, in two thousand and seven to update the facilities plan, uh, and I see no reason to, to not revisit that and make the appropriate updates. I want to also clarify that, you know, the way that the pricing for this engagement works, it's not like there's a, uh, it's like a price per school in terms of getting pricing, so if, um, in the facilities plan, or, you know, we revise it to note the addition, or looking at the addition of another, um, another elementary school on the South Side, you know, that, that should not be a, uh, uh, you know, a significant increase to the cost, it's, it's a revision to the plan. So, um, so the, the cost of this, of this engagement is not, um, you know, tit for tat in terms of the number of schools that are in the plan itself. It's the process by which the company will go about determining what the, what the cost is and what their, you know, what their work is. And so, if they are tasked with updating, uh, uh, having, you know, kind of having a, no, if they are tasked with updating something that we've begun, and then we can provide guidance in terms of what those updates are, uh, that will procure a, a, a price that is, uh, far more cost-effective and, um, and in line with what I think our angle is, which is, um, you know, so maintenance and the facilities, uh, plan are, are two different... facilities plan are two different engagements. You know, we had a vote as a city to modernize the school facilities, that is a capital engagement. So the mayor put together a plan that was based on a hundred million. What we need right now is to make sure that that number is accurate, and that it's accurate over the lifespan of the project. So we have accurate numbers for, you know, 2030, if those schools are going to be built in 2030. So I think that that's ultimately what the deliverable is, and in light of the news regarding the construction management at risk, I do, I would feel more comfortable if it is explicit in the document that when we get pricing, that the pricing would be based on a competitive bid model.
Mrs. Simmons, just one point, more than one point, but I'm not going to belabor this discussion, because I think we have shared our thoughts, but I concur with my colleague, Ms. Omer. The growth is clear in the South Side. But also, all facility plans that we have on record, they have built upon the previous facilities plan. You know, one or two schools may have moved down, one, two schools on the priority list, but they pretty much have, they built upon the previous plan. And just for clarity, in 2012, the comprehensive facilities plan was no cost to the district, it was completed by CFO at that time, but it is important that we, we have good data. For example, Blackwell, because of the flooding that happened a couple of years ago, it is now, has impacted the foundation of that building. So things change, so we need to have good data. And because we have had years and years and years, I continue to say years to prove my point, but you get it, we have had deferred maintenance, and we cannot keep, you know, putting these Band-Aid fixes on these learning facilities for our children. We just, we have to stop this. And you've been very clear about discrepancy in the information that we recently received about construction costs. We need to move on, and if the RFP comes back, a cost we are not satisfied with, then we can make adjustments. But we asked for this assessment, the board, this is something that we requested for the administration to do. So if it comes back, hi, then, you know, we make those adjustments. All right. Next item.
Next item is December 20. Will we receive the first draft of the 2020-2021 school calendar?
My eyes are going. Um, well, I'm pleased to share a first draft for feedback with you guys this evening for the 2021 school calendar. So want to start with some of the things that would remain the same between this proposed draft and the calendar that's currently in place for this school year. So the first item relates to Labor Day. As we know, the General Assembly passed legislation allowing school divisions to start before Labor Day, moving forward. However, in alignment with neighboring divisions who have already come out indicating they do not intend to start before Labor Day in 2021, we propose alignment with them, and would like to engage in conversations over the course of this next year with school communities and families about an earlier start date. I will note that if we were to move to a before Labor Day start date in 21, 22, it would be a much shorter summer then, because we'll be going later this year, because of where Labor Day falls this year, the first Monday of September is actually the seventh of September, meaning school wouldn't start until the eighth, so it's already pushing a week out from what would feel normal this year, and then potentially start before Labor Day in 21, 22, which is short in that summer. Again, to be discussed, but just flat in that sense. The second relates to Thanksgiving break. That remains the same, three days off for designated school-based staff, two days off for 12-month employees. Winter break is aligned to the proposed calendars of our neighboring divisions, which is two full weeks off for designated school-based staff, and I'll share in a moment a consideration for 12-month employees. Spring break is aligned to our neighboring divisions, the first week of April, and is one full week for designated school-based staff, inclusive Easter Monday, and in a moment I'll share a consideration for 12-month employees aligned to our policy. The number of pre-service days remains the same, which would be three days for division-level professional learning, three days for school-led, principal-directed professional learning, and then two full days for teachers on their own for preparation, classroom setup, et cetera. The number of days for teachers new to RPS, New Teacher Academy prior to a pre-service remains the same, two, and we are proposing that much like tomorrow, all staff members are given off for Election Day, except for essential personnel such as custodial staff or facility staff who need to be in the building to monitor the elections. There are a couple of proposed adjustments, for which we would appreciate your feedback. The first is within school year division-level professional learning days, this number hasn't changed, but we have adjusted the date. We've moved them within the months of October and January to not align with a holiday weekend to support increased attendance. We initially thought that would be a good thing this year, maybe more so for families because they'd have off a longer block of time, but many of our staff are also enjoying a longer block of time, and so in order to ensure that professional learning occurs, we want to take the trade-off of a four-day week elsewhere. We've already met with school leaders and gotten some initial feedback, and so we've added two additional early release days, so a two-hour early dismissal in October and January, in addition to the early release day in March for school-led professional learning. So principals would have three times, that would also build off of the division-level professional learning days. We've doubled the amount of time allocated for parent-teacher conferences, which is two early release days twice a year. Winter break for 12-month employees, based on how the holidays fall, as you'll see in the calendar on the last slide, 12-month employees would have off the full second week of break, and we're proposing to also take the two days in the first week, so this would be one more day off than 12-month employees received this year, based on how the holidays fall. Easter Monday, this year, designated school-based staff are off for Easter Monday because it's naturally part of spring break. Current school board policy gives 12-month employees the Friday off of spring break, and so we would simply be proposing the opportunity for a 12-month employee to take that Monday off if Easter Monday was an important part of their religious influences versus the Friday. And then finally, this year, based on feedback from our teachers and staff, we opted to give off Election Day rather than the VEA lobby day in January, and so we will be engaging votes on that question specifically of should we continue this practice? And if not, what date would folks want to swap out, because we'd have to give back a different holiday in order to still end on June 18th, that Friday? In terms, in terms of explicit engagement around both the things we're proposing to keep as the same, as well as the possible adjustments, we met with the Principal Advisory Council last week for initial feedback, tonight our Eder for your feedback, meeting with the Parent Advisory Council next Wednesday, the Teacher Advisory Council the week after, no later than next Monday. Public engagement will be open and available via our website for about three weeks, and on December 2nd, based on that initial round of feedback, we will present to you an updated draft, and at that point determine if additional feedback is necessary throughout the month of December. And here is just a visual draft calendar of the things we have discussed. Happy to take any questions or comments.
So this is first read, and any feedback, would I be back from the board by the eighth? Is that amenable to number one?
I'm actually willing to take it much later because we bring the updated draft on December 2nd, so maybe the end of, I don't have a calendar. Just so that we have like a week to pull it together, the second, maybe by the 22nd of November? Does that date work for folks? That also will give the board two full weeks to get a sense of public commentary as well via the website.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was largely responding to your initial proposal for feedback. Yeah, I'd say this, based on my experience the past few years, this calendar, as much as anything, requires a lot of public thought and thought and discussion, so I would certainly want to wait until we got as much of that as possible before making a decision.
So the feedback is due by November 22nd?
To me, that would be great, but that's not the last time. We'll obviously bring it back again on the second of December. On, in terms of the vote, it's on the proposed calendar for either January or February, so we're very ahead of the game. If there is no further feedback in December, certainly we could take it for vote then, but if not, obviously we can move to the first meeting in January.
Ms. Dool?
I just want to thank the administration, unlike prior years, I think this is the earliest we've started thinking about the calendar, so I appreciate the bringing it early and giving it lots of time to get feedback. Thank you. I learned.
Next item?
The next item is December 20. Will we receive an updated rezoning?
Good evening, everyone. We just have a brief update on rezoning, on where we are in the process. If you remember, last week, we shared with you the draft proposals that Cropper had put together. Just a reminder, after our last rezoning meeting, the committee members put all of their regional feedback into one document, and we wanted to check with Cropper to make sure that it was accurate. He then took all of that information and came up with four draft proposals, which I shared with you. We then shared those narratives with the committee, again, to check for accuracy on the regional, the regional feedback that was in each one of those proposals, and make sure all the narratives are, were correct. We received, and I'm glad we did that, because we received feedback from board members as well as committee members with a couple of updates or changes. So then, he took all of the confirmed feedback as of Monday and is putting together maps based on that feedback. We did this process instead, so he wasn't putting together maps and getting feedback after, we wanted to confirm accuracy. So he will have maps to us by tomorrow. We will then share with the board, as well as the rezoning advisory committee, so that they have a couple of days to review the maps, along with the narratives, prior to our last meeting on Friday. Our goal on Friday is to adopt three to five proposals that we can then bring to you on December 2nd for adoption, for consideration.
One, they'll come to the board on November 18th?
Oh, excuse me, they'll come to the board on November 18th.
Ms. DeYoung?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Shady, Madam Chair. What Madam Chair proposed for our consideration, those next two meetings, Superintendent just referenced, for example, the 18th, and then that first meeting in December is not the fourth, what is it?
It's the second.
December the second, that in lieu of meeting here in City Hall, that we instead convene as a body in our school, in our school buildings to accommodate as many persons as possible, anticipating that there will likely be a lot of folks, a one or 10.
The December 2nd meeting will be at Green because there will also be two public hearings at that meeting, one for rezoning and one for rezoning.
Ms. DeYoung?
Thank you, and I like the morality of life, that's good. I propose, if it's the will of the group, that we also convene in a school building at that meeting on the 18th, November the 18th, because as soon as the, these final options or proposals are disseminated, fully into space, as persons already have regularly, I want to come out and share the perspective.
Ms. Gibson?
Well, I guess I would just like to lobby on behalf of my district, I'd love to have a meeting at IntraPark Elementary. We haven't had a meeting at that school yet, and that is one of the schools that has impacted a number of the different options that are on the table.
Ms. Dool?
I have a non-meeting-related question. I was wondering, there was a survey that was sent home to, with parents at the schools about like region-specific options, so I'm wondering if we had received the feedback from those surveys.
You mean the Thought Catchers? Yes, and that was all the feedback that we shared with the rezoning committee a couple of weeks ago. All the Thought Catchers were collected from the schools, any of that were turned into the front office, and then our parent liaisons captured all of that feedback. There, it was more representative in some schools than others, some schools didn't share any. We heard from a lot of families that they did the online portion of it. We had some teachers who translated the feedback online, but the ones that were captured in the front office, we all, that's what was shared with the rezoning committee.
Gotcha, so like when it said agree with this option, don't agree with this option?
All those tallies are in that feedback. But we are going to do, once the proposals are final, along with our robo-calls, but a family-friendly version of that was well-received, so we'll be working on something like that to send home again.
Okay. And can I advocate for, I think in La Western, there's like option one, option B, and option two, which is super confusing, so I think it eventually would be good to just get it clearly where it goes.
Well, not that we want to be more confused, but the current proposals will be proposal X, proposal, there'll be letters, so I don't think we're moving away from that language. And the four proposals that we sent everyone, that's what we'll be sharing with the public.
Okay.
So we have the meeting on the 2nd of April. Right?
Ms. Volkan, do you want to come first?
Yes.
Okay. So we have one. So, we have one in the south side. I would suggest another one in the south side, because it's greatly impacted. The rezoning greatly impacted the south side, but anyway. One in the south side, and we could move one in the north side, to be fair.
Well, there's only two public hearings, so there's one on, if I'm correct, and if I'm wrong, there's one on the 25th, and then one on December 2nd. So, Green is already scheduled, so it would be the will of the board, we want to have the one on the 25th.
Just to clarify, there's a lot of different things going on. So we have two school board meetings currently, regularly scheduled school board meetings, left in 2019, November 18th and December 2nd. The December 2nd school board meeting, we have at Green, where we will be not only having a regular school board meeting, but also having a formal hearing on the renaming process for the Green community, and having a formal hearing about the resulting options. I think what I heard a few minutes ago from Ms. Young was to potentially have the November 18th school board meeting also at the school, which the administration gladly supports. I'd prefer to know as to where. In addition, we have November 25th, which is not a regularly scheduled board meeting, it is an additional formal hearing on the rezoning proposals, and that is scheduled for where?
TBD.
That's TBD. So really, we have the 18th and the 25th, which we could do at school locations.
November 25th?
Yes.
Oh, our regular one?
No, it's not a regular one, that's an additional hearing just about rezoning. So, so we could hit three, it hasn't, it hasn't been posted yet. So we can, we've hit the south side, we could do north side, and the east end, whatever the board would like. We don't have to go through the process of figuring it all out tonight. If you'd like the board leadership to take feedback, and they can let us know, but we have no objection whatsoever to allowing those in schools, I think that's a good idea.
Ms. Ballow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to hear that we're talking about having another meeting on the 25th. This has been a long process, we've got a lot of feedback. I think even more people are going to, to wake up to the process into the options when they see that there are final options that we're looking at. So I'd encourage that we have that, at least that extra meeting on 25th. I like the idea that earlier about having one in each sort of quartile of city. I also like the idea of whether we could maybe spread out a couple of other agenda items, so we're not staying until 11 o'clock at night at some of these other meetings, so, so I'd love, I'd encourage us to think about whether we could do an additional one, and maybe give us the opportunity to, to react to, and talk through more about what implementation would look like, what timeframes we're dealing with, to get those types of questions answered. So I'd say, let's, let's be pretty deliberative here, recognizing that we're on a relatively tight timeline.
May I remind, we have a nomination for Kinder Park, so we could do that on the 18th, and then maybe Armstrong on the 25th. So we capture these then?
Ms. Burke?
Well, I prefer Bellevue.
Bellevue on the 25th. So the 18th, November 18th at Kinder Park, regularly scheduled board meeting. November 25th, which is a special hearing on rezoning, at Bellevue. And then December 2nd, regularly scheduled board meeting at Green. The 25th could be 6:00 PM as well, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Eden?
I'm going to take a hand in a little bit to fess a little bit, because the district calendar has the school board meeting on December 2nd here, and the renaming meeting at Green. So let's get that together, because I am very super powerful, but I cannot be in both those places at the same time.
Your clerk? So, your clerk will make sure those things are updated. Thank you. Next item?
The next item is an updated budgetary item, 8.01, received a quarterly financial package for science and arts. Those financials were posted to board docs, they were also shared with Mr. Simmons and Ms. Branda, I don't know if they had anything there. The next item is to receive for action, dreams for RPS budget adjustment?
Thank you. So the document listed in this section is the exact same document that we had from last school board meeting. If folks can pull it up, and if we can get it on the screen, and I'll go to slide three. It articulates there the list of reallocations slightly above $1 million, and then four purposes, equity fund, ESL position match, state-funded reading specialist match, and the local match for tuition for diversity. And so, we're just asking for official approval to make those reallocations. And then next, we have the proposal on the equity fund, if the board so chooses.
Ms. Carlson and Ms. Young?
I just have a question about order. Since we're, since we will be voting, essentially voting on the equity fund, which is within the budget for the dreams for RPS project plans, can we talk about the equity fund first?
No objection from the administration, that's fine. We thought the board would want to do it the other way, but that's totally fine. So how about we?
Voting on it, right, on the equity fund?
Yeah. We could do it all together, we were just thinking that... We do it all together. So let's go to the equity fund. If that is acceptable, okay.
Good evening, Chair Page, school board members, Superintendent Cameras. I am delighted to present our proposal regarding the equity fund. As you may recall, at our last school board meeting, we proposed reallocating $400,000 from our budget to launch an equity fund. Our plan is to use this equity fund to help accelerate student achievement at four elementary schools, Blackwell, Carver, Fairfield Court, and Woodville Elementary Schools. These are four schools that have four or more Level 3 indicators, four or more Level 3 accreditation indicators. While we have middle schools that meet the same criteria, we believe that it is most prudent to focus these limited funds at those four elementary schools to maximize their impact. We have worked directly with our school principals at these four schools to develop the proposed spending plan, which you will find on the next slide. I give you a chance to review. As you can see, there are commonalities among these proposed expenditures. For example, all four schools have requested technology. Technology would be for Chromebooks, LCD projectors, smart boards, headphones, with a particular focus of technology at the K through the second grades. Additionally, all four schools have requested literacy and library resources. This is mostly to establish classroom book sets, so that our students have a plethora of reading materials, not only in their school library, but as well as their classrooms. You will also see that three of our four schools have requested mindfulness resources to create mindfulness rooms as a way to help equip our students, learn social and emotional skills, and to assist our students who are sometimes going to crisis mode. Two of the four schools have requested STEM resources, which would be used to enhance their science labs, to be able to provide students with hand-on scientific experiments through purchasing lab equipment and kits. And then we have a school who wants to bring the joy of music through buying instruments, a plethora of instruments, to start a band. And then we have Fairfield Court, who is requesting an attendance officer, who is a retired teacher, with the principal believing that that attendance officer would be fantastic with the community, and serves as a conductor, home visits, connecting with parents, and getting school, getting kids to come to school more often. So I will pause there and field questions.
Ms. Ballow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and thank you very much. I am excited. I think this is a positive opportunity for, for schools that really can use, use the resources. I do have a couple of questions. I see that we got what appears to be one, one part-time staff member being added under the equity fund. So, would this equity fund be expected to be a year-over-year contribution? I assume we wouldn't just spend $75,000 a year on technology resources at, at one school? Or is this supposed to be a one-time sort of infusion? I ask because I wonder if principals thought about FTEs as well as, as other resources in schools?
Yes, the communication that we gave them, really around FTEs, was to help them understand that at this point in the school year, that our talent pool, the quality of candidate you find at this point, perhaps is not the best use of physical resources. What makes Dr. Servins, the principal at Fairfield Court, which makes his ask different, is he has already identified a person that he has in mind, again, who's a former teacher at Fairfield Court, who believes, he believes that person will have a very valuable impact on the community. In that case, that would be a recurring cost.
And, so like I said, I'm, I am really excited to see some of these expenditures, because I, you know, go into some schools, Carver, J. K. O., where I see that there have been, the technological resources just aren't there that I see in other schools. The, the quality of, of devices that they're using, the, the lack of any type of smart boards, things like that, I see these things in other schools, I'm not seeing them in, in Carver. I see library resources in other schools, and I'm not seeing it in Carver, so I am excited about this. I, I do think that moving forward, it's really important to, to focus on staffing at some of these schools as well. So, I'm not trying to say, you know, $75,000 isn't good enough for this school or that school, because I think it's very important, but anything we can do to get more, more support for adults in these buildings, I, I hope will go a long way in the future. So my, my thought is, I assume we're not going to spend $75,000 a year-over-year on technology at Carver, but if we could do $75,000 this year, and then, and then take a look at that talent pool, to see if there may be, you know, an FTE that could be brought in, I think that'd be great. But thank you for bringing this, bringing this up. I think these, these schools in particular really, could use these resources, I think will go a long way for these students, and I'd be more excited in particular for, for the school that I represent on here.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am so happy to see the attendance position there as a proposal. That's a position that's been asked for for years. Most of the children who go up now at Fairfield have to walk to Fairfield, but they have a walking school bus, where people on staff go from door to door to get the children up to campus school. So this, this is, this is excellent. This is excellent. What my concern is, after we finish these for schools, then next year will be another set? Or this is for, what's the, what's the long-term piece for this?
Well, I think the long-term piece is to allocate physical resources at the schools that need it the most. So I think we would look at perhaps middle schools next year, depending on SOL performance.
Well, I also hope this is at Bellevue, which I didn't find out until this year, and one computer for classroom, some classes, so.
Right, the only thing I would ask the board to remember is that we have influx and infusion of Chromebooks.
That's right. But not for, that's for what group are you referring to?
That's for all, that's for all schools, correct? Yes, that's for all schools.
So this is in addition to that?
This is in addition to that, and what I'm excited about these technological asks is that these computers, it feels like they will specifically go to our kindergarten and second grade segments.
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you for this. I'm excited about this equity fund. I will repeat what I asked to last, you know, in the last board meeting. And that specifically regarding MLK, we didn't talk about middle schools plural, we talked about MLK Junior Middle School. The reason being is because, I will state it again, we all know that our MOU with the state of Virginia is based on the length of the time range for our MOU, is based on the time when the, when the Virginia Board of Education believes that MLK will be accredited. MLK, we talked about those four or five squares across the board that are in red, MLK has been in the red for many, many years, too many years. I am asking my colleagues to include MLK in this equity fund. We need to address it with a sense of urgency. And I see mindfulness up here, I was at the school the other day, and my heart broke because we have, there are not enough resources to do the mindfulness, okay? There are not enough resources for every classroom in the beginning to have mindfulness, when you have a principal that has to take time out and say, okay, wait a minute, I have to address this, and she goes through the exercises herself. So, I am just imploring my colleagues, which I thought I did before, once again, to include MLK in this round for the equity fund. Do I have to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to include MLK Junior Middle School in the equity fund to improve equity fund for 2019, 2019, 2020. To improve and/or accelerate academic achievement, this fund will be used for the purpose of supporting, the fund will be used to support, but not limited to programming curricula and increase human talent and resources in the school.
Standing. So it's been moved by Ms. Cosby and seconded by Dr. Savini. To include MLK Middle School in equity fund. And/or, and/or accelerate academic achievement. Funds will be...
I'll do it. You can't stand him. I'll do it.
Will be used for...
I'll do it.
I apologize.
The motion is to include MLK Junior Middle School in the equity fund for the, I'm going to add, for the 2019, 2020 school year, to improve and/or accelerate academic achievement. Funds will be used for, but not limited to, programming curricula and inclusion of human talent and resources.
Any discussion? Ms. Young, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Ballow?
So I, I want to support this, but I have a question. So are you proposing that the $1 million be, that the $1 million be subdivided by another school, or?
It's $400,000.
Well, sorry. The, the offset of $1 million from, from dreams for RPS, that's the origin of the fund. So actually, the initial proposal called for $450,000, if you liked the last week's proposal. We divide that... we divide that by five, that's ninety thousand dollars, which recovered for elementarys plus MLK.
Almost.
Uh, I think five times ninety. So we'd be a little bit short on the other four schools, but that would enable us to meet Ms. Cosby's request.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Barlow?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I want to feedback a bit on what Mr. Barlow was speaking to in terms of the question about recurring funds versus one-time expenses. And, um, I just want to implore the administration that moving forward, the documentation that we receive is, um, is very explicit in terms of the intent. Um, so, you know, again, so if this is, if there is one FTE, that it be clearly defined that it doesn't just say attendance support, this is point five or whatever, so that we know what the FTE count is for the position, um, and that we have a clear understanding what the year-over-year plan is in terms of this, you know, the allocation of funding. That's standard protocol in a budgeting process such as this. Um, so, um, I have some hesitation, um, that we are essentially saying we're not going to hire, but we don't want to add any jobs until like next year. Um, because I, I do think that staff positions are critical and we really want to be able to support these schools that have, um, uh, that have struggled in terms of accreditation, that's why we've identified them, that they ultimately need more adults in the building. Um, and so I still would really like to see the additional administrative support at Carver and other staff positions at all of the schools that have been identified to, um, to be able to, uh, to be able to move the needle, I believe in, um, perhaps a more tangible way. Um, I also want to put on the table, so as we're talking about, uh, additional, you know, funds to be able to allocate both to these schools and to MLK. Um, uh, and, you know, I, I still also feel really strongly about the need for our English language learners um, and with, and Huguenot and also, I mean, you know, Henderson has substantial needs as well. Um, I, uh, I do think that we should look at the hundred thousand dollars that has been allocated for the gala. Um, also in the last meeting, I also noted that, um, there were, uh, some staff positions that had not been filled yet, um, including the Passion for Learning staff position, so there was three hundred and twenty thousand dollars allocated for the year for that line item. And if our intent is not to have that position filled, um, until, uh, the January mark, then that means that we should have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, that could be allocated towards, uh, some of these needs. Um, I also think in that same line item that there was like, you know, fifty thousand dollars for travel, that still seems like an over the amount of money. Um, and, and I also wonder with many of those other line items that were in the strategic plan, um, you know, if we could get some more accurate numbers in terms of the actual amount spent, if there is, uh, if there very likely is some additional funding, uh, that could be reallocated as well. Um, and again, I'd like to make sure that we're very clear, um, in terms of those one-time uses versus the, um, versus the year-over-year expenses.
Ms. Barlow, Ms. Senio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was just curious to, because I know that we did discuss the middle school option, um, last time and I thought we might see, uh, see that included and I was curious about why, but at this point, um, you know, it seems like we're going down that path and I'm happy to support it.
Ms. Young, Ms. Moore?
Just briefly, I just want to commend, uh, the administration for being nimble as they raise these dollars and, uh, and addressing, uh, collective concern. So I just want to say thank you and I'm glad that we're offsetting those dollars from something we've already appropriated next.
Um, yeah, I don't have much to add. I agree on getting kind of a, a running list of what's, what's, we're changing. We're moving, we're having quite a bit of movement, so I just think it is incumbent to keep track of this, um, especially because this is our strategic plan and so we eventually need to adapt against it. Um, I don't think that that should be used as a weapon to say, oh, we're not delivering in our strategic plan. I think it should be used as the fact that we're involved in our strategic plan based on needs. And then in regards to MLK and Passion for Learning, I wonder if also potentially there could be, if there's some money left over in the Passion for Learning budget, potentially some of that could be redirected towards, because I know that's specifically targeted for middle schools and high schools. So maybe we could also explore how to jumpstart Passion for Learning at MLK and potentially some of the other middle schools mentioned.
Dr. Savini?
So often times we talk about, um, resources and everyone, I guess typically think of things rather than people. And for schools such as MLK, certainly Carver, um, imperative that we have those bodies to support the needs of the student there as well as the principal, because it seems as if, uh, they're doing a heck of a lot with minimal resources than people. And when you want to move the needle, the, the things can help, but you need someone to utilize those things. So please, um, keep that in mind when you, you know, want to allocate funds for things that are, in my estimation, unnecessary, such as a gala or whatever have you. Uh, think of the people, think of the students. We always talk about, you know, full of children, full of children. Well, that's what they need.
Your points, the board's points around human resources, that's understood. It's not falling out of their ears. Clearly, by adding human resources, we could, uh, improve the learning environment. What I will just, that the principals themselves came up with these lists. So we did not micromanage or provide, we just provided them guidance, but we didn't micromanage how they came up with these lists. So when you're looking at Fairfield Court, Blackwell, Carver, and Woodville, the allocations they've asked for, that is coming directly from the mouths of those four principals.
Is it because they feel that they'll get those things maybe faster than the people that they really need?
Well, what I would think it is, uh, full transparency is that after you get an FTE of a hundred thousand dollars, you have pretty much nothing left. And I don't know of adding one additional person when there are so many other needs, especially with technology, equipment, mindfulness, things that you can actually train existing staff around, that as a former principal, to me, that's not a good allocation of money. And I think these four principals would agree with that assessment.
So, um...
I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, even with the, um, even with the FTE that's only thirty thousand dollars, we still haven't even included the cost of healthcare insurance.
That's not an FTE. That's an hourly rate.
You mean hourly rate, sorry.
There's still benefits associated with that.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
So, thank you for this information and I too support the reallocation of funding for MLK. But my question is, because we have, we are reallocating, so you want to bring back to the board the reduction, ten thousand dollars per school, you know, how do the principals realign that funding?
As a procedural matter, I would ask for the board's permission to make that adjustment without bringing it back to the board for further review, just so we can begin to get going on it. But yes, we would work with the principal to reduce, um, of those four elementarys down to ninety thousand so that we could add the ninety for MLK, if that would be all right. Otherwise, we have to wait until, um, November eighteenth before they have approval and then begin the process of procuring these things. We know their needs are significant and urgent, so we'd like to try to move forward if, if at all possible.
So you're saying MLK will be able to receive funding at the same time as well as all the schools?
So the, the proposal I put forward, though someone would need to motion it, would be ninety thousand dollars for the four elementarys and ninety thousand dollars for MLK. And we would make the adjustments with the principals for those four elementarys to reduce it from one hundred to ninety.
So...
There's a motion called, oh, do you want to, in favor of this? In favor of this?
I'll draw that. I'm just asking, because he's essentially allocating the ninety, my, of the recommendation.
Okay.
So, what else?
I'll just draw one.
Okay.
So Ms. Cosby is withdrawing her motion as is board support to reallocate funding for MLK.
So I move that we approve the expenditures for the equity fund as presented by the administration with the addition of Martin Luther King and including up to two hundred and fifty dollars divided by the five schools. I mean, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm sorry.
Can I recommend the proposed motion?
Yeah.
That you, um, I want to remind the board there are other provisions besides just the equity fund and the reallocations. But as it pertains to the equity fund that the board would approve, the reallocation of funds as presented, um, uh, or the reallocation of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars divided evenly, ninety thousand dollars per the four elementary schools plus ninety thousand for MLK.
That is, mm-hmm?
Second.
Blackwell, I'll, I'll spell it out, Blackwell, Carver, Fairfield Court, Woodville, and Martin Luther King Junior.
Ms. Gibson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll excuse for that. And I guess I'm still confused because you had mentioned that, um, that you had indicated to the principals that it would be hard to, um, hire staff members, but then also said that, um, you didn't give direction to the principals in terms of what they put on their list. And I just, I feel, I feel uneasy because I, I'm, I'm inclined to abstain from the motion. I'm thrilled that we are reallocating things, but, I mean, I, I do feel like we need, we need to have people in the building and so I just want to get clarity.
Yes, in my position, it is my responsibility to give guidance to principals. Again, being a former principal myself and understanding how we have to balance precious resources, I need a guidance. However, I did not micromanage principals and tell them they should not be RZ.
Mr. Barlow?
I just want to, uh, to say that the number of meetings that I've been to at Carver Elementary in particular, where we have talked about how great it would be to get this, these technology resources in particular, um, trying to see if we can set up grants with other organizations and working through those types of processes and things. And then, um, there's a lot of energy. Uh, the STEM lab was just cleaned out this past weekend by a bunch of volunteers. I know that people will be very excited to see, um, to see the opportunity for, for science experiments and things of that nature. I've spoken with the librarian. Uh, I know that she, um, she would love to get a refresh of some of the, the books and things in the library there. So, um, although it may not be, um, a new assistant principal or something like that at Carver Elementary, I am, uh, I'm so encouraged by the resources that, that this school in particular, that I know that these other schools deserve and need at this point. And I know that, um, we, we have to keep advocating and keep doing what we can to make sure that we are putting more adults in these buildings where we need them most and I'm very excited about it.
I may be out of line, but I do want to echo Mr. Barlow's sentiments. Walk these school buildings. Go into the classrooms. You will not find libraries. We want our kids to enjoy reading, yet their classroom libraries do not contain a variety of genres, books that are on level, books that are appealing. They contain books that are falling apart, very sparse titles, uh, all written on, on different, all written on pretty much the same, uh, reading level, which is why all four of these principals ask for library resources. They understand the power of having a beautiful, welcoming library that has a variety of genres written on different levels for your children exposed to reading and developing a love for reading, as opposed to just saying, okay, our library here is not great, but once a week we're going to go down to our, our school library. That's, that's not what we want in our schools. Again, I do hear the need to have additional human resources, but there are other resources and materials that our schools need just as much to enhance the learning environment. Science equipment. You can't do science experiments without equipment. If you look at our science scores across the division, I mean, four of our elementary schools missed accreditation because of science, because they're not doing hands-on experiments. And sure, you can get another science teacher, but while the equipment and supplies, what does it matter?
So again, just for clarity, the motion is to approve the reallocation of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars divided equally between Blackwell, Carver, Fairfield, Court, Woodville, and Martin Luther King Junior. Call the question.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Dean?
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Savini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
The next item is...
Thank you.
So we have to go back to receive the action for the budget adjustments for RPS.
As a refresher, or rather, before I go forward, um, on behalf of those five schools, I just want to say thank you very much to the board. I appreciate, um, that support very, very much. And I know the principals and, and teachers and staff will be thrilled to get that infusion of resources and I look forward to us being able to do more things like that, um, in the upcoming budget cycle. Um, the remainder of the proposal is, uh, to reallocate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide the local match for, uh, state funding for fifteen ESL teachers. I know we spoke about twelve previously, but we actually think that should go up to fifteen. Um, and then a hundred K for the required local match for two state-funded reading specialists. Um, and then, uh, twenty-five K, again, for the required local match, uh, for state-funded tuition reimbursement for current RPS teachers who are obtaining a reading specialist endorsement. Again, these are all things that are covered through state funding, but there's a local match for each of them. And, um, uh, so those were the related expenses.
Ms. Owen?
I move that we approve the Dreams for RPS, um, repurposed funds for acute school bases.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Senio to approve the Dreams for RPS budget adjustments. Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Dr. Savini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passed at nine zero. The next item is to receive legal contract clause options.
So the FY twenty budget, as you're aware, is going to say one hundred and fifty thousand dollars decrease in legal services. On our current trajectory, we are very unlikely to realize these savings this year and to find a way to close the gap. So we put forth a couple of options. The first should sound familiar. Um, and as I said, in one, in FY twenty, we budgeted one and a half million dollars for the legacy early retirement account, um, despite the fact that our mass-only exposure for the liability for this year is about one point one million dollars. Even if every eligible employee jumped into this plan for this year, our liability will only be one point one million dollars. So we would recommend reallocating funding in this account to...
So we would recommend reallocating the money in this account to cover the legal services shortfall. Alternatively, looking at our largest, uh, available pots of money, for main, we could reallocate the resources from the following accounts. We do not recommend doing so, that's facilities for parent maintenance, there's about four hundred and fifteen thousand there, or advanced program shows about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Ms. Owen?
I move that we approve option one for the, um...
Ms. Young, then Ms. Owen, in charge?
You don't want me to make that motion?
So we, so...
Ms. Young, so Ms. Owen, not you?
I was prepared to make that as a motion, that we, in order to relieve the budget pressure from the legal services, that we would choose option one and allocate the money, uh, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the legacy early retirement account. That's my motion.
So, is there a second? So, there's no, the motion has failed for life of a second.
I, I apologize, it was not my intent to be rude. Uh, I, the committee, that, so the legal ad hoc committee, um, as provider for the board, we come back, uh, at that first meeting this summer with the recommendation, we just agreed to a, another meeting, immediately prior to the meeting on the eighteenth. That said, if it's the will of the group to do something now, obviously it's the will of the group to do something now, I just, I'm sorry, uh, it was just my intent to provide that clarity, um, but I'm not so naive, I mean, to think that anything radically is going to change between now and the eighteenth, and full disclosure, to be blunt.
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, um, Ms. Young for the clarification, but also, um, also, I mean, we're talking, yes, and the question was about the legal, um, portion of it that we knew we were out of compliance, um, and I did ask the question, if we could look at the entire, um, proposal that was put forth, the budget proposal, because there were several things, the legal portion of it, the, um, software portion of it, um, the, um, uh, there, there were a lot of recommendations. I want to make sure that in addition to the legal piece, that we are complying to the other recommendations, I'm sorry, I can't go right now. But, um, if we can look at, thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, if we can look at the initial proposal, because a lot of it, you know, there were potential savings, potential savings, so, um, and we just want to, I'm going to go.
My apologies, I misunderstood, uh, our last meeting, I, I thought the board was, uh, focused on the one hundred and thirty. If you'd like us to go back and, and look at all of those, I'm glad to bring something back at, at the next meeting. I don't think it's essential that it's voted on tonight, is that correct, Mr. Simmons? No. So if you'd like, we can go back and look at all of those items and, um, brief the board on all of them and, um, include any additional information that is necessary for that full package.
Okay.
It's time for this.
Ms. Sapien?
And then, sorry, and also, we'll have the legal committee, uh, report at that time as well.
Well, option two is, uh, advanced programs, what is it?
I have to ask Dr. Gutt, uh, to answer the question. Advanced programs.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
What is advan, what are advan?
What are advanced programs? Advanced programs are things like IB, AP, um, space, uh, gifted and talented, supporting, um, students in our regional schools.
So administration is okay or two, what are you doing about it? Bring it back. All right, next item.
The next elements are now sent to chairman, who do not have any more travel activity requests, you have a receipt for actual budget transfers.
So the information... So we need...
I'm glad you changed your questions.
Oh, you need to present, even for the consent agenda?
The consent agenda is different. They were just...
Perfect.
I have just a point of thought.
Ms. Dole?
I thought, um, the purpose of consent agenda was literally just to say, I motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's what we're waiting for, somebody to say.
So we don't need to read all the stuff within the consent agenda unless board members want to hear, read the stuff. The purpose of consent agenda is just to, is it, it's non-controversial.
But do you need the administration to do so?
No. So we just need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Dole, and seconded by Ms. Burke, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Young?
Uh, I think I heard Andy saying there weren't any, uh, request for district funds.
Call the question.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Sapien?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Dole? Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero. Under item ten are the informational items posted to board, actual budget transfers for information only, and information regarding the BPI enrollment by site. Next item is new business.
So, next title, any announcements? Ms. Cosby?
I mean, new business, but I did, I was just in this and just wanted to correct that. I definitely want to thank my colleagues for including MLK, you know, we appreciate it, um, it is so needed. I am so confident with all of us working together that we are going to prove that may say it was wrong, that children can do, they will do, and they will do quickly. And so I just thank you all very, very much.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, I just wanted to, um, ask a question regarding open enrollment, um, it's, so, uh, the government school open enrollment is in progress now, and, um, it's my understanding that there have not been any, like, I'm not sure what the outreach has been, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're thinking about equity, I want to make sure that there is a lot of time to go in terms of, um, you know, being able to, uh, apply those tools, and so my question is regarding communication and the open enrollment process. So it's basically, and it's asked, that there is some outreach done?
Yes, there is, um, a fair amount of, uh, outreach that's going in right now, and I'm glad to bring, uh, and update on that, uh, at our next meeting, I should.
There are no announcements, so we need to phone.
Squared to section two point two, the three seven one one A. Seven of the court, Virginia, nineteen fifty, and amended, I move that the school board with city enrichment convening, clause session two.
Including clause session four consultation.
Four consultation with legal counsel and briefing, uh, staff members or consultant pertaining to actual delegation, where such, where such consultation or briefing in the open meeting would have the effect of negotiation, negotiating or delegating posture of the school board and or consultation with legal to a law counsel, void, or retain by the school board regarding specific legal matters requiring legal advice, such counsel employee had of seventeen, eighteen, dash, zero, three, and student matter, number nineteen twenty, dash, zero, three.
All in favors?
Second, thank you, Ms. Owen.
So it's been moved by Dr. Sapien, and seconded by Ms. Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It holds?
Aye.
We're now enclose.